Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lax.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with these provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the New York Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. We are going to have Dr. Wileski give us the superintendent's report before we go into our closed session.
Thank you, President Lax. Good evening, everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students at Wornstorfer Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Alana Trainer, and Joe Sutari is the principal. The week of January 23rd, East Brunswick Public Schools joined over 36,000 schools across 115 countries for the 2023 Great Kindness Challenge. The Great Kindness Challenge is a week-long program dedicated to creating a culture of kindness and compassion in communities worldwide. To help our students practice kindness and to put on their compassion in action, various activities were planned throughout our schools. On Wednesday, January 25th, East Brunswick High School's "We the People" team placed first in the New Jersey State Competition, earning the right to represent New Jersey at the National Competition, April 22nd through April 24th. This will be the 34th time out of 35 years that East Brunswick High School has represented New Jersey at Nationals and is our 31st state championship win. The students led us to our first in-person win in over four years, and we are looking forward to competing in April. Congratulations to these incredible AP-IPL students and their dedicated teacher advisor, Mark Mondray. Special thanks to teacher Ellen Scivvy, retired teacher advisor Alan Broadman, and countless AP alums who continue to work with our students as they sharpen their skills moving forward. Supervisor of Social Studies Dan Moran, Department Chair of Social Studies Herb Paluso, and the entire East Brunswick High School and EBA administrative teams and larger community are very proud of their hard work and great accomplishments. So best of luck to them at the Nationals in April. In sports, girls' and boys' track are the GMC Champions. Girls' swimming are the Red Division and GMC Champions. Now here is actually photographic evidence that Megan really could not be at the board meeting because she's right in the center.
There's her absence notice.
Boys' swimming are the GMC Champions for the second season in a row. Varsity Cheer placed first in the Woodbridge Perfect Storm Competition. And JV Cheer placed first in the Secaucus Cheer Competition. The East Brunswick High School's orchestra presented Vivaldi's Ring of Mystery on Wednesday, February 8th. Oh, presents, I'm not presented. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of everybody's [inaudible]. Presents Vivaldi's Ring of Mystery on Wednesday, February 8th at 7:00 PM. The performance will be held at the JM Pack at Hammershold Upper Elementary School. This performance has been funded through a grant with the East Brunswick Education Foundation, so we thank them for that. The theatrical concert version of Vivaldi's Ring of Mystery is designed to introduce the audience to the life and music of Antonio Vivaldi. In my last board meeting superintendent report, I acknowledge the success of the Alliance of Youth Leaders, the Raritan Valley Branch, also known as the AYLUS, in fundraising, and the board accepted a $4,000 donation from the students. I'd like to amend my acknowledgement to be inclusive of all the students involved in this fundraising effort. They are all listed on the screen this evening, and it will become part of the record of acceptance of this much appreciated donation.
Can I actually be a little rude and interrupt you for a moment?
Absolutely.
So that's interesting, because I thought, and I guess we thought that this was a high school endeavor, and I didn't realize I'm seeing some of our youngest learners there.
Right.
And I'm actually noticing a couple of familiar names. And I'm wondering if maybe the proud parent would like to make a comment about that. I see your three boys up there.
Yes. So this program was started and led by high school students, but actually students providing, this tutoring student to Asian countries from elementary schools, from middle schools. So due to the time difference, so those young kids, some second grader, start to teach at 7:00 AM in the morning. For every hour, they charge $3. So accumulate $4,000, which is thousands of hours, because certain class was not charged or couldn't be collected. So it is great effort. So the beauty of this program is we get the young students involved at very early age. So they know that, you know, volunteering is a good way to help themselves to grow and help other people to grow. So that's the beauty of this program. So my little one, so he was very excited. Every, each time when it's his turn, he get ready at 6:00 in the morning. He tried to set up the zooming and get everything. So this is very good. So that's, some parents come to me says, you know, they want to continue this program, and they want us to encourage those young students to continue.
That's amazing. You should be a proud papa. We're proud of all these kids. That's terrific. Sorry about that. I just, when I saw that, I said, those are elementary, and they're [inaudible].
And thank you again to all the students and their parents for supporting this and their donations.
It's amazing, yeah.
Yeah. And second quarter report cards can be viewed online through Parent Access on Tuesday, February 7th. Hard copies will be made available at the request of anyone without internet access. Kindergarten registration is now open for the 2023-2024 school year. Children who will be five years of age on or before October 31st, 2023, are eligible for our full-day kindergarten program for the upcoming school year. And so just visit us at ebnet.org for registration information, and all required forms can be found on our website. And that is it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a wonderful report. I liked it. All good stuff. And I'm thinking that Frank probably paid you to make sure all the good stuff was in there before he gives his report. I'm just guessing. Very, very good timing on your part. But on that note, we do have a need right now for closed sessions. So whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion at a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or government interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Thank you. We shall see you in approximately an hour. So we're all back with our waters. That's good. So I'm going to expect really great things from you guys. So we do have a treat. Our learning across the district, which we always love. We have our Central kids today. In first grade at Central Elementary School, students are learning more about all the different sounds letters make. The trouble is, they make so many different sounds, especially when they are put next to different letters. We've been uncovering the secrets to reading. First graders are learning secret stories. It's catchy, memorable ways to remember the sounds that letters and letter teams make in tricky words. And we are going to hear some fun things from our first graders at Central now that they are no longer parched, right? So we are all ready. Okay. So Mr. Husar, you want to come up and introduce who we have with us today?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Husar, and I'm the very proud principal of Central Elementary School. It's so great to see our students and so many members of our community out tonight supporting these kids. That's great. That's really great. In 1999, yeah, I know, in 1999, I started as a student teacher at East Brunswick High School, and I never left. I taught at East Brunswick High School. I taught at Churchill. I worked at Hammershold, and now at Central Elementary School. And in my career as an educator, I've been very lucky to witness a lot of incredibly amazing things. But there is nothing, there is nothing that is more powerful than being in a room of kids learning how to read. Learning how to read and then learning to fall in love with reading. I'm so lucky in my job that I get to sit in classrooms throughout the day next to children and say, "Hey, could you read this to me?" And sometimes they struggle, and they struggle again. But when they get it, and they smile because they learn to read something, it is more powerful than anything in education. It's a great, great thing. And that's what we're here to celebrate tonight. You guys, learning to love to read. It is a great thing, and I'm so very, very proud of you. Thank you. I'm also, I'm also very proud tonight to introduce your teacher, Mrs. Keely, who is absolutely one of Central's finest, and that's saying a lot. That's saying a lot. Mrs. Keely makes magic happen in the classroom every single day with a big smile, a well-planned lesson, and a group of students who are so eager to please her. It really is a treat to get to work with Mrs. Keely, who is such a tremendous teacher. And I can't wait till the next time that I get to introduce Mrs. Keely, because it will be for her being our Teacher of the Year when we get to that in the spring. Lots of great things going on with Mrs. Keely. So I now turn it over to Mrs. Keely.
I want to give a special thank you to Mr. Husar, who always encourages the teachers at Central in our goal to make learning enjoyable and accessible. We are very grateful to have such a supportive principal. He helps us give our best to our students and our family every day. And first year is a big year for children. It is when many of them are making a huge growth in their ability to read. We know that students learn best when they enjoy learning. This year, we've been using secret stories to make learning more fun. Each reading secret has a cute and memorable story to remember, to explain why certain letters make the sound that they do. So Kenneth, can you come share our first story?
For example, E-R-I-R-N-U. You are our friends who love to go driving together. Sometimes they don't make the best choices when driving and go a little fast. Then they need to slam on their brakes, and they go [screaming].
These stories are quick, humorous, and relatable. These stories make a lot of our heart words or trick words decodable. Students can sound out more complex words with these stories in mind. So the word "her" is no longer just a word they need to know by heart. They actually can sound out [gasps]. So we have talked about these being secrets you can share. They go on secret story word hunts at home. So instead of just doing boring reading logs, I'll print out the stories. Their parents can see exactly how we're teaching them these different sounds. And at night, they have a mission to find these secret stories inside their books, which they are always very eager to do. So today, our first graders are going to be sharing with you several of these stories. Here's some pictures of them going on the word hunts.
This studious pair spends most of their time at the library reading books, but they can't concentrate when it's noisy. And so they are always reminding everyone to be quiet, and they say [whispering].
These cute letters are in love with each other. When they have to stand right next to each other, they get embarrassed. They look down and blush and say [singing].
These two can't make up their minds about anything, especially about what they do when they get together to play. They spend all their time trying to decide, should we play football, or eat candy, or we could play video games. All day long, it's [singing].
AY and EY are just too cool. When they get together, they throw on their sunglasses, give two big thumbs up, and say [singing].
Y got sick and tired of saying "Gee". So he snuck into the closet of superhero E and superhero I and took one of their capes. So now when he's at the end of a word, and, wait, thanks, no one could see him, he will be sneaky and wear his E, E or I cape, so he can say their name instead.
These friends. These friends remember how badly their other friends drive. E-R-I-N-U. So they don't have cars. Instead, they prefer taking the train. But they get bored waiting around the station. So to help pass the time, they make up little chants to say while they're waiting. S-I-O-N-shun, T-I-O-N-shun, E-shun, A-shun, A-shun.
Now you know why they got the water.
And those are just some of the many stories that we have that they get so into and really have made reading so much more enjoyable. Thank you so much.
That was, that was truly wonderful. That was water well spent. If our first graders want to sit for a couple of minutes, I see our board representative, who happens to be a senior in the high school, which probably seems so far away for you and your parents, but I promise you it'll be in a blink of an eye. We're going to have her give a report of what's going on in the high school. And so you guys can see what you have to look forward to in about 10 years, 11 years. No, nine years.
Envision mail.
Envision mail.
So we just had our midterms up at the high school. Mixed feelings, but it's all right.
Way to start on a positive, Megan. I just had to get them excited.
Well, I'm just being real. Like, I'm just being real. Mr. Pike, if you're listening. But yeah, so we had our midterms on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday. And then Tuesday, we started semester two. So I'm officially a second semester senior.
Commit, committed to tell them what you'll be doing when you leave us in the fall.
Huh?
Tell, tell them where you're going in the fall.
Come on, we're trying to get them excited. Oh, I'm going to college.
Really? Tell them where you're going.
She's really proud of you.
I'm very proud of you. We're very proud of you.
I'm going to Princeton in the fall.
Princeton. Start now, my first graders. Follow in Megan's footsteps.
So yeah, so we're starting second semester, and a lot of winter sports and stuff are having their championships now. So swimming had theirs this past weekend, and we had boys and girls both win GMC titles. So that's accounted. So that was very good. That was making history. So we had that. And then just through most of the end of January and stuff, we had a lot of fun events at school. So for example, International Club had Clash of Cultures, and that was a big hit for a lot of people. They presented about different countries and cultures, and they had a really good turnout with like presentations and performances and such. So that was a really good experience as well.
Thank you, Megan. That's what you guys have to look forward to. And another thing for you to look forward to is next month is Read Across America. And so a lot of the members you see around the dais here, we get to come into the schools and read to you. But Mrs. Keely, if it's okay, I'm going to actually request that I come to your classroom, and I like to have them read to me, because I think you are more entertained than I would ever be. So.
I love the sound effects.
I love, yes. You did, this is why you guys got the water. Shh, don't tell the other students. I am going to call a brief recess so that our friends that would like to get home, Ken, you are more than welcome to join us. We have some very exciting things going on. We have budget reports. But I will not be, I will not be insulted. So. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Husar, for our Central School friends, Mrs. Keely, our little learners, and the EBA pride team who makes this possible for all of us. So we'll be back in a few minutes. Okay, welcome back. So for those of you who weren't here earlier in the evening, for Dr. Wileski's superintendent's report, he had a lot of really great athletic achievements up there. And I thought that it was because Mr. Malta paid him to do that before he gave his budget presentation. But quite honestly, I don't know. If you also got to Miss Megan, I'm not sure. Maybe more than a bottle of water. So, because she also brought us some good news. So on that note, the good news is you have us all warmed up with that. The bad news is you have to follow those amazing first graders. So, good luck. See if you can entertain us as much. Would you like water? Actually, yes. Mrs. Gwass, would you like water? They do? Okay. See, Mr. Winston wasn't wanting to get you water. Come on. What's going on? What's going on there? Oh, see, he did think of you. Oh, the method to your madness. Okay. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. And we are quietly, we are quietly having a very successful athletic year. We do have six GMC championships already to date, and our winter, all of our winter GMCs have not completed yet. So pretty exciting and very enjoyable for our student athletes and our coaches. So some of the budget items that I had the pleasure of working with, or some of our athletic supplies. You know, one of the first things that I feel make a difference from my office is being able to work with our coaches, sitting down and going over needs, and needs based upon from year to year. I think that's what makes the biggest difference with our student athletes and with our program. So I enjoy doing that part of it because it allows me to connect with our coaches and allows us to make a difference with our student athletes. So our athletic supplies for each team, year to year, is really based upon need. So that number will fluctuate sometimes with some of our teams. One of the other highlights for me is the, our uniform rotation. I had the opportunity last year to make some adjustments to it, just based upon our athletic numbers. Our athletic numbers have been fantastic over the course of the last year and a half. And, you know, this past fall, we had about 720 athletes competing. This winter, we have about 690. And in the spring, we're anticipating close to 700. So that uniform rotation was able to be adjusted based upon some of those numbers. And that is a great part of what we get to do, because I get to do that and make a difference with some of our teams. One of the other things to highlight for us was, in talking about a full-time athletic trainer, a second one. We have one right now, and we also have a part-time trainer. And I feel like this is the perfect storm for us to add that second full-time trainer. As I said earlier, our numbers have greatly increased, and athletes need treatment per day just to be dealt with injuries. And I think just having the two schools also, it makes a lot of sense for us to do this now. And it's something that I'm looking forward to by having the opportunity with a second full-time trainer. As you can see, as in our pie chart, our transportation has greatly increased. I think part of that, too, is based upon some of our athletic numbers. We have a lot of teams going to a lot of different venues and a lot of different events. And that money is being distributed by getting those teams to those places. One of the other things for us, too, are athletic shuttles from Churchill to the high school every day. Those athletic shuttles take the kids, our ninth graders, to the main complex of the high school and allow them to compete with their teams. We're kind of moving from a, what was normally a two-shuttle day to now a three-shuttle day. Again, just based upon some of our athletic numbers. So that adds into part of the transportation piece for us. And now just to highlight a few other, a few other requisitions that we have. You know, now that our stadium is complete and it is redone and it is beautiful, it looks great. We're going to also be adding our field hockey complex and softball complex. Just some things outside that I think would fit in with those two new complexes. New goals for field hockey, new goals for soccer, protective mats for our track during the fall and spring season. And then we also have some other pieces to add for Churchill and East Brunswick High School, which would be new benches, new areas for our students to, our student athletes to have in their bench areas when they are competing. So these are some of the highlights. And in looking at the pie chart, you can see some of our numbers. One of the things that, another one of the things that fluctuates each year is our athletic official fees. That number is going to go up each year, and we deal with that just by taking into account where those numbers are going from year to year. So that's our athletic budget for the year, some of the highlights. I really enjoy doing the athletic budget. Joe was laughing at that before, but I do enjoy doing the athletic budget for us. It's a, it's a fun piece for me, too. And I feel like that makes, that allows our office to really make a difference for our student athletes. So, thank you.
If I may, just a couple of clarifying points for the board with regard to the pie chart versus some of the items that were highlighted. So the pie chart reflects what is currently the tentatively pending approved budget. It doesn't include, at this point in time, a few of the things that Mr. Malta had identified. So for example, the additional athletic trainer is currently pending. That is not within the budget at this time. And a number of those items of equipment that were highlighted are currently not moved into the approved column as yet. Those things will be reviewed as we proceed with budget development to ascertain the extent to which they can actually be. development to ascertain the extent to which they can actually be considered for recommendation and approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have a question for you. I'm gonna open up to questions. So, transportation, obviously, we can see is one of the largest costs. How are we doing on trying to make sure that our away games, when the kids are being bused there, that we have multiple grades? So, for example, like if it's JV and varsity, do we try and keep, or even if it's a different sport, going to the same school, do we try and keep that so that we can consolidate busing?
We do. As an example, basketballs and volleyball, two teams will share one bus as long as we can fit that amount of students on there.
Great.
So if we are playing a freshman game, a JV game, and a varsity game, our freshmen and JV, a lot of times, will share one bus and allow then for the second bus to be used for the varsity.
Terrific.
Yeah. So we do do that.
Good. Mrs. Becker and then Mr. Carangelo, I see.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
So the thing we have to remember about the buses is, for instance, as we were watching during Dr. Valeski's superintendent report tonight about all the teams, teams who won the GMCs, the red division, states, at the beginning of a season, we have no idea how far any individual team will go, right? So, we can budget for what we feel will be the transportation. But how wonderful, as our teams go on and play more tournaments and more games, and they're winning the red division and the GMCs, and then the regionals, and then they're going to the state semifinals and the quarters. And so, these are all unanticipated, but wonderful. So, we can't possibly know at the beginning of any season how far any particular team is going to go. So, that's why there's sometimes a larger cost for transportation.
So I don't want to, but I will have to make a correction to that.
Okay.
As we project out for transportation services, we look at what has, we don't know what the teams are gonna do for the next year.
Right.
But we have analyzed what the teams have historically done. We look at the last 12, 13 months of data, how many buses were required, which includes the competitions and so forth. And we utilize all of that information in synthesizing what the costs will be. The bigger unknown in terms of transportation for athletics becomes the issue of what the bus companies' costs will be. That's, that's a huge piece.
Right. But I wasn't, of course we plan it out. And you're, you always base it on historically trended data. But I'm saying that sometimes we have questioned if the rates of transportation exceed what was budgeted because we can't possibly know.
That's true.
That was the only point I was trying to make. I wasn't saying that we just willy-nilly pick a number and say, yeah, a couple games, tournament or two. Of course, it's very carefully plotted and you and your team do an amazing job with that. I just wanted to say that, like with anything, it's the, the element of the unknown. And, but it's a wonderful unknown.
That makes sense. Mr. Carangelo.
So adding the second athletic trainer is not the question. Thank you.
Yeah. We hope so, yes.
Yeah, well, Michael said too. So, and another thing, before we get to new softball field, which is a great thing to do, too, is there any improvements to the existing softball field? Because I know there's been some issues with that. Are there any discussions?
Last year, we added fences, new fencing for out there. We added new bases. We put new sheds for rakes and materials to be used to dry the fields out and to manicure the fields prior to games and after practices.
Is there any way to incorporate those new things for the better typo, like, and who's taking care of the grass?
We, we have a group that does do that for us. They, they do a very good job with it. Our, our two softball fields play very well. We do get a lot of compliments on the surface when our kids play. Yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Sizmar.
So I read about the mats to protect the track.
Okay.
What's the plan? Because that was a very expensive track. And I know you asked for it and were denied, so I'm not directing this to you. What's the plan? Because, do we have an old mat that we're using? Or what's, what's the plan for that to protect that track that we just put down?
So, a couple of things. The requests that are pending are not requests that were denied. We need to look at where we are in terms of the overall budget. And part of what we do each year, just a reminder for the board, that is, we look at what it is that we can incorporate into our short-term financing. So each year, we renew some of our debt, which enables us to do some facilities, projects, purchase of equipment, and so forth. Some of these items will likely be incorporated into that program. It takes a smaller bite out of the budget and enables us to do more.
Okay. So the reason I said the word denied, it says other, other budget requests not approved. So that's why I sent it in the denied category. So at this point, it's not approved. I apologize. But.
But not yet denied.
Not denied.
My, my comment would be, that field and that track was very expensive. I think we need to, sorry, in my opinion, we need to find a way for that. I understand what they do when they, when they go across the track for all the athletes. The other thing that stuck out, and it's a small cost, but I hope we can get it in there. My first thing was the trainer, but Mark took that, so thank you. The game day package, it's 15 years old. The ask was for $2,700 for something that lasts eight to 10 years. So it sounds like we're five years out. Again, I, I don't think it's window dressing at that point. I think our football games are very important. And, you know, markers and things like that and the first down chains and all that type of stuff. Just small ass that I put out there. I just think with, with the, the new field, the new track, these are small ass where hopefully we can cut somewhere else and put those things on the table. So, and thank you for the work you're doing with the teams. I mean, it's amazing when we come in here and see the success this past year.
A lot of fun, a lot of fun.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Reese, was it, oh, Mrs. Ms. Chu, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question on the transportation. I know there's already a lot of questions about that. But in terms of the trend from like '21, '22, '22, '23, it kind of jumps around. So I was just curious, is that driven by higher busing costs or the underlying assumptions? The, the jump from year to year is kind of...
So, great question. And so, this is the answer on that right now. So, from '21, ' '22, the expenditures were $147.5,000. Currently, in this year's budget, the amount available or the amount that was budgeted for transportation was $79,200. At the time that the budget was done, we didn't have the full experience on what the expenses were going to be in the prior year. In the report that you have in front of you, what's left out of that $79,000 is $662, and that was as of January 27.
Yeah.
We still have all the rest of the seasons to go through. We will need to supplement that budget. And that means making budgetary transfers from other areas in the overall district budget to bring that up to what is necessary to cover the transportation costs. So, you're gonna see that by the time we get to a tentative budget, you'll see that number change because we'll have more information to be able to make that adjustment. So, you're not gonna see that massive differential because that's not reality in this moment. We know that it's, that the, that the, that the athletic transportation budget needs to increase and we'll need to make some internal adjustments to make that happen.
So I'm just thinking, if it doubles, right, from 80 to 160, it's just feels, still feels like quite a bit of jump to 260. So I'm just wondering if we're seeing busing costs go up or we're building in more contingency?
No. Actually, there's, there's no, I, I can't say contingency. As I had mentioned earlier, when we do work on the transportation aspect, we're looking at historical data. But what we are seeing is significant cost increases.
Yes. Yes. That's kind of where I was going, is that this is being driven by continued...
And just as an example, a contract, one contracted bus for, for athletics is anticipated to be about $550. And we're looking at that for 174 buses. In addition, there's the district fleet, which will be used to the extent possible to support athletics. We are projecting 399 events that can be supported by the district fleet. But that also comes at a cost, and that's at $420 per bus. So, when we look at the number of events and the estimated cost for district vehicles versus contracted, we're at the $263,000.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Reese?
Thank you so much for your report. Appreciate all the wonderful work you're doing. And I have one bus comment and then another comment. So the bus comment, I think, I'd like us all to remember this, that when it's time to, we, we, we always do support Mr. July 's efforts to expand our bus fleet. But now it's here in dollars and cents, what he's been doing all along is trying to bring more buses in-house. And so if you see on page seven, which he just referenced, so our buses are, of course, effective, 399 racks and 420. So, instead of 550 a route. So, you know, when that comes around again, it not only is great for the kids going home, but it's also great for the athletic teams. And it allows them to get where they need to go in a safe manner with our bus drivers, you know, our folks who we trust. And not that we don't trust the others, but ours are a little bit better than the rest, right? We always have a warm feeling for our own bus drivers. And also that we have the ability to have them on hand and ready to go. So, you know, that, that was that bus talk.
Yep.
And the other question I had was, if you had plans, and maybe I didn't see it here, for the exercise room at the high school, like maybe giving an update on where, where that's at?
So we have had some discussions along the way. And we've come up with, you know, some ideas and thoughts. But I think we're gonna further have those discussions and see, you know, what, what works best in, in the space that we have for right now.
But that is like a on-your-radar?
Oh, yeah. Most definitely.
Thank you, Ben.
Mrs. Reese, it's actually a priority.
Oh, excellent. Excellent to hear.
Yes.
Because we have wonderful athletes and we want them to have the right stuff and we got the right person.
Right.
Thank you.
We are, we are likely looking at a complete redo of the space, not just an augmentation of existing equipment or a replacement of just equipment that's out of service. So we're just looking at redoing the whole space.
Wonderful news.
Okay.
Mr. Winston and then Mrs. Glass.
Mr. July, can you explain that to me again? I'm looking at the '22, '23 appropriation of 79,003, the '21, '22 appropriation, 147, and then the '23, '24 appropriation of 263. Are you saying, am I to understand that at the '22, '23, we budgeted $79,000 for transportation?
Yes.
All right. So if we use a 13-month trend line like you just stated, how did we fall out of trend line if we did 147 in '21, '22, which would be less than 13 months from that mark? How did we so grossly under-budget '22, '23 using the logic that you just put out as a 13-month trend line?
It was the cost of transportation services that, that led to that. Transportation services have dramatically increased.
Reduced. From '21 to '22, transportation services had to reduce by 50% to make that number of the '22, '23 in line with the '21, '22.
When '21, '22, '21, '22 hadn't been closed out, we didn't have all '21, '22 data to be able to budget effectively for the '22, '23 year. All the data was not available. What you're seeing in '21, '22 is the actual expenditure that was incurred for athletics.
I understood. Which set that line. I guess if I, I would have to go back to 1920 prior to, to have a reasonable trend line pre-COVID. I'll eliminate COVID because nobody was going anywhere. I, I'm not satisfied with the explanation how we so grossly under-budgeted '22, '23, where you're now going to have to come back and ask for more appropriation, which I guess falls into my change order, issues that I had about six weeks ago. This is a grossly underestimated expense. We went from 147 to 79 to 263. I, I would need explanation on how we fell into that 79,000 number. It does not support what you just said is a 13-month trend line. I, I don't think you have the answer tonight, but I would like to get back on that. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Glass.
I have questions about the explanations of some things. We have, and I'm just looking for some help here. We have under reconditioning equipment. Reconditioning includes uniforms for football, lacrosse, and field hockey as needed. But then there are also in uniform replacement, and then there are also under the additional, you know, where it is for teams for replacement. Could you just, I don't understand why they show up under reconditioning.
So, our helmets and pads get sent out. That is what that $17,000 covers.
And field hockey?
For, for boys lacrosse and for football, they do.
Okay. But field hockey was there, too. That's what I was asking. Pads make sense. Are we gonna put hockey in there as well? Or is that coming under, is that separate because we're with other districts?
Well, for right now, our, our players are supplying their own equipment playing hockey.
Okay. My other question was just, I guess to borrow someone else's phrase, a little color to, the number for cheer had me surprised.
Okay.
It's just substantially different from the other sports. But that's a three-season sport with three levels.
It is.
I just was curious as to why it's so much less expensive.
So a lot of their expenditure goes towards their uniforms as well as their off-site practice facility.
Okay. On page 11, cheerleading's just a very low number. I just, it didn't match up with three seasons of a sport plus three levels to only be that number.
So part of their, part of their expenditure, we, we spent $4,600 for their practice venue off-site of the high school.
Okay. That makes more sense. Thank you. I did not see that. That makes sense. I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to say, I was happy to see the nets for the stadium going in for other teams to be able to use the stadium because I know that's been an ongoing concern about them being able to get out there. So that seemed fantastic. And also, are we supplying more safety equipment for girls lacrosse? Did I see that in there? Are we doing goggles for the girls this year?
So, yes, we generally do. Yes, we always have goggles on hand for.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Sure. Mr. Carangelo, go ahead.
Regarding the ice hockey, I don't quite understand the concept of them paying for their own equipment. Can you...
So a lot of our kids, a lot of our players, and not just on our team, but on many teams, they play, travel, and they have their own equipment. They have their own pads. They feel very comfortable wearing their own equipment and their own pads. So, that's what they do. We, we are supplying helmets and things like that for certain players, but.
And uniforms?
And uniforms. We did buy uniforms as well. But their, their pads and stuff, their equipment, they have. Again, that's theirs because they, they do play travel and they, again, I think it's, with hockey, it's a lot of the comfort level, especially the skate park. It's the comfort level for them.
The sharpening is at the ice wing and all that?
Yes, they do do that. Yeah. A lot of kids have their own machines actually now. Which is pretty, it's pretty cool to see, actually.
Mr. Hall.
For the, Mr. Carangelo's question. So if a athlete uses his equipment, how can we make sure, guarantee the safety? How can we make sure the, the equipment can up to the standard?
So for, for us with the equipment, our kids that are playing travel, they're buying the equipment that is, passes the standard. And it has to pass that standard. And that is the equipment that they buy for themselves to play and that they use for, they use for our high school team.
So or the coach or the...
The coaches.
Regularly check out?
The officials do, too, before games. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for the transportation, based on the information you guys provided, contract buses are about 30% more expensive than our own buses.
Yeah, ridiculous, yes.
So, so question now is, do we have, do we utilize our own bus fleet to the maximum to reduce the counter?
Yes. The, the calculations going into what's projected for next year, consider, we have two, we have two drivers that are for athletic transportation during the course of the week. So it's allocating two buses for weekdays when schools are in session and all of our fleet available for weekends. So that's already been taken into consideration.
Any other questions? Thank you. Oh, do you have any other? I'm sorry. You know, it's funny. You started out by talking about the uniform replacement. And is it just us and Mrs. Becker? Remember when that, that was a big thing years ago, when we finally got something in the uniform replacement? There was cycles to be at reasonable numbers because that was one of the biggest parent complaints years ago.
Okay.
My kid is going in there and sweating and handing it to somebody else and...
Sister system.
Yes, so it's terrific.
Yeah, we are unique in that we provide for all of our teams, our middle school teams, right up through our varsity teams.
Yeah, so terrific. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
And congratulations on all your successes.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Many more. We're looking forward to it.
That's right, we are. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay. Anne Marie Gilbert, come on down. We'll be learning community programs next.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to have the first graders come back and read for me. They did such a great job. All right, so community programs. So this is our enrollment. It's very, it's about 60% of where we were pre-COVID. And that seems to be about where we're sitting. So many companies are continuing to have employees work from home, and just the need for morning and aftercare specifically speaking to is down about, again, to about 60% of where we were pre-COVID. And that seems to be the, the trend for the foreseeable future. So that being said, first, let me, if you can indulge me for a moment, I'll just kind of talk a little bit about what we're doing in morning and aftercare. So, you know, we have seen, just to go back to enrollment for a moment, a slight uptick from next, from last year, and I think we'll slowly see that again, as we continue to move forward, as parents or workplaces decide to send them back to work in, in the workplace. But I just don't foresee it the next couple of years. So, working with that, let's talk briefly about the programs. One big thing I always like to tell people, what we do in morning and aftercare is not just childcare. You know, we're giving kids, we want to give them in the morning a positive start to their day before they go into the classroom. So we are providing, we have board games and crafts and puzzles and life-size Jenga and Connect Four, and we get them outside. And, you know, the big thing is giving our kids a choice in morning and aftercare. Nobody wants to be forced to do anything. So we have so many things on hand for them to, to play with and to use. So Magna Tiles, they love, Model Magic, all these kinds of fun things. In Ask, we continue to do more as well. We pay certified teachers to come in to be homework tutors, to help the kids with their homework. They get a snack and a drink every day. And the costs for these things continue to increase. To replace our games every year, make sure the puzzles have all their pieces and broken things. You know, these all have costs, and as we all know, cost of supplies have increased greatly. We nurses, we try, we can't get a lot of nurses. We have a lot of staffing, you know, as so many companies do. But when we do have nurses, we make sure we're putting them in the locations where we have the highest-risk students. That'll be our students with diastat orders, our students that are insulin-dependent. But we make sure we have the relationships with the families. Just as an example, we have one family, whenever I don't have a nurse, I personally talk to mom every month and tell her what days we have nurses scheduled, what days we don't. She can adjust her schedule as, as she wishes. But we work together with our families, because we want to make safe, quality programming for our families in the district. So moving on, like again, I just want you to know, we're, we're doing a camp before and after school, is what we're doing. We're not just having kids sit there and we're just supervising them. We want to make sure we have quality programming. We're not, we don't go by the state requirements as far as ratios. I make sure they're less, because I think that's quality, better safety for the kids. So this is all incorporated, you know, in the fees that we charge our families in the district. But we continue to make sure they're competitive. We look at other districts. We look at daycare prices. We, we make sure we're providing what we can for families at a reasonable cost. Talking about the Early Learning Academy, our preschoolers in our 11th year, it's been amazing. We put here 162 students. We actually have over 180 enrolled. But 162 is your equivalent, because some are half-day, most are full-day. We have our midday extension, which is our lunchtime that, that parents can add on. But right now, we've sold out of every full-day spot that the Early Learning Academy has currently in seven of our eight elementary schools. Just a handful of half-day spots left. We have amazing teachers. We continue to follow the district's curriculum. What's better, right? You have your children in preschool, they go right into kindergarten being familiar with the same curriculum. So we have, you know, the creative curriculum, our foundations, our phonemic awareness. All of that is in the preschool, so when they get to kindergarten, you know, they're like the little mayors of the classroom, right? They're ready, they know the curriculum, they're moving ahead. So the preschool's been doing great. All of our preschool classes, we make sure have top-notch equipment in there. Every classroom has the kitchens and the building blocks and all of our tabletop toys and everything, dramatic play, to make sure these kids are learning through play. So we just make sure that we have a loving, nurturing environment for these kids and that they're ready for kindergarten when they get there. In the summer, we'll be offering our summer program again for ELA. That's going to be our fifth year. And we include kindergarten readiness for those ready for kindergarten, as well as our three- and four-year-olds. We have a six-week program. We have themes every week and vendors coming in. You know, mad science, and we had a dinosaur dig last year, and they all got to take things home with them. And we just have so much fun having the children from the community. So that's what we're doing there. Enrichment, we're, we're having so much fun. We added forensics this year at Hammershold and up at Churchill. This is the first time in my 12 years in the district that we've been offering enrichment now for our Churchill students. So that's including this year, we did forensics, we did drones. Yesterday, they were using drones to play soccer. It was really neat to see. In Churchill, we just started a new teens art, which is kind of cool. They do mixed media, where one week is pastels, and then they're doing sculpting, and they're going to do, just all you can imagine. Every week, they bring something home with them. The things I saw yesterday, they did a chameleon. It was beautiful artwork. I could never dream of doing this, never mind at the Churchill age. So they're having a lot of fun with that. We're continuing to offer more programming for our older students. All the great fun things we're still doing with elementary, all kinds of art, coding, music, robotics, STEM, STEAM, all kinds of fun. So the big new thing that we did this year, which has been a huge success, are our Schools Out programming. So we tried it for the Monday in observance of Martin Luther King's birthday. We did a trip to Dave and Buster's, which was a lot of fun, very scary to have the kindergarteners, but we, we worked through that. But it was great. We had a lot of staff. They all had a great time. We had a huge waitlist. We just couldn't get more staff at the time. So now we're going to do Bransburg for February 20th, Bransburg Sports Complex. And we're keeping it at such a reasonable rate for parents. It comes out to about $10 an hour, and they get eight hours of care. They get the bus service to wherever we're going. For Bransburg, they're going to have two games, a laser tag, and they're going to have organized Gaga and soccer all day. And what better for parents? They know they're, they're in our care of district employees, and their kids have a great time. And if they have to work or just need a day to get things done, we're happy to do that. So Bransburg is already sold out. We have a waitlist of 40 students. I'm going crazy. I'm getting staff. So we think we're going to be able to open it up for a second bus and be able to accommodate about 92 of our district children that day. So we're very excited about that. So the more days we're off, we're going to continue to have these programs for the community. If I can, again, just indulge for about a second more. We also have the adult school. We don't have that in our budget, because it's from a Title II grant from the state. But it has been amazing. We do high school equivalency at night. We do English as a Second Language. And those are like our biggest pieces, but we also have citizenship, which is amazing. This year alone, we've already had five members of the East Brunswick community obtain their citizenship, and two more are already scheduled. That's a lot, because this can be a three-to-five-year process to get your citizenship, if you're not familiar. So to have five already, potentially seven in one year, our teachers are just amazing. They all have full-time jobs during the day, and they come at night to serve the community. We're only required by the state to have 143 students. We just hit the 220-student mark at night, so it's a lot. But this year, of course, we had a lot of our Ukrainian families come, and we've been so happy, and I don't know how to say no. So they are bringing family members, and we just continue to let them start in our program. So the adult school has been amazing. I just wanted to mention that. So thank you again for indulging me with that. So that's our program. So, you know, our projected fee increases, you know, as I mentioned, supplies are a huge increase. But while we're doing that for morning and aftercare, we have not eliminated any of our discounts. We have sibling discounts. We have, if you pay for the full year, you get a discount. If you are on free or reduced lunch, you get a 50% tuition discount. So we're continuing, we're not taking any of that away. We're doing enough to do what my job is, to make some money for the district that goes back to the district, but still ensuring it's competitive as far as our pricing, and they're getting a great program. Snacks went up and just incremental salary increases. We know our minimum wage is already going to $15 next year in January. We have to go a little above that and get, you know, quality staff to take care of our kids. So that's really, those are the major things that have gone into our fee increases. We're putting money back in our program. As I mentioned, you know, there's always new games that come out, and the kids are like, please, can we have this? So we're keeping up with the times. We keep replacing things. So that's where the money goes back into. So the typical with our estimated revenue, you know, the other category, which is the enrichment, as we mentioned, that's just typical being the smallest piece of revenue, because our vendor costs are really expensive. So to keep these program costs down, we only go this much over the vendor costs, so that more and more families can enjoy our after-school programming. So that's always our smallest amount of revenue. The other three are always typical, you know, the early morning program, it's kind of the smallest programming. It's only two hours of programming, so of course the tuition's lower. Aftercare, then of course is about three and a half hours of care. And then, of course, the preschool. Again, we're trying to stay competitive with all local daycares, preschools, but making sure that we're doing a top-notch program for our community. Moving on to the expenses. You know, typical salaries, that's where we put all our money to, making sure we have the staff. As I mentioned earlier, you know, the state says for elementary, I can have 15 students for every adult. I try to keep it to 10 to 11. You know, it's a safer program. We, you know, you can't eliminate, right? Kids play, they run, they fall down, things happen. But if we can minimize that with so many eyes on these kids, that's what we do, to ensure they're getting a great program. You know, and then the enrichment providers, the vendor costs, the green piece of pie you see. Games, snacks, that's all in there. And then, of course, all the other FICA unemployment, workers' comp associated with the salaries. All right, and then the net income. So again, this is again, very typical. Early morning program is the tiniest piece. It's two hours. As we mentioned, you know, we're down to 60% of the enrollment. Early morning's even like slightly, just slightly above that, but, you know, there, it's low in comparison to pre-COVID. And then Early Learning Academy and the after-school program are usually our biggest pieces, about split in half. All right, and that's what I have, and open for any questions.
Thank you. I've got a quick enrichment question.
Of course.
Because I know we're talking about how a lot of the morning and aftercare programs and enrollments going down because people are working from home. I'm just wondering, does enrichment help bridge that gap a little bit?
It's, we're definitely starting to. In fact, we actually had a more successful year last year with that other piece than we did pre-COVID. So it's definitely helping to supplement and now adding these new School, Schools Out programming. And we also last summer started some summer programming. Very different from the township, because of course we're not looking to compete. We do little sprinklings, if you will. We'll do two- and three-day camps. Or that week, there's always that gap. Like this year, our last day of school is the 16th. Most camps don't start until June 26th, right? Parents scramble, what am I going to do during that week? So we provide full-day programming for students during that week, so our families can have care. So all those pieces, as we continue to add those programs, will definitely help supplement some of the lower enrollment.
Very good. I'm going to actually make a quick comment, since you did on the adult school. The citizenship classes, which are amazing, and if anyone ever has time to go and visit them, do we still have, do you still do the end-of-year, the graduation and the citizenship in May at the library?
We are going to, yes. This is the first year we're going to be back in person, because they deserve to be recognized. So we absolutely will be doing that.
All right, so I would like an invitation to that.
You're on the list.
And one other thing, and I don't know if anyone, maybe Vicki remembers, years ago, we used to sometimes, we used to get, sometimes they'd actually come and read them. You would remember this. Some of the students, because the, what they write about these classes and how it changes their lives is so impactful.
It really is.
So I would like to request that, you know, if, if they can, if they can come in, that's wonderful, if they're willing to. But you remember that, Vicki, how wonderful that was? But if they can, even if we could just get for the board to see some of the blurbs that they wrote about what it meant to them.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
You know, I know you did it, and it's, it's not the focus here, but it is just really something that's spectacular that we do, and you're going above and beyond, and teachers are, so.
Great, yeah, absolutely.
I see Mr. Carangelo's hand going up, so.
So I appreciate your enthusiastic, you know, presentation. And I know I'm one of nine, but I'm the new chair of this. So I look forward to working with you and the other committee members. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Yeah, thank you. Looking forward to working with you, yeah.
But one of nines, but even though, you know.
It's all great. Thank you so much.
Is that, oh, Mr. Winston?
Yeah, just real quick, I love your presentations every year.
Thank you so much.
You run an incredible program.
Thank you.
This year, you're a little more humble than I was hoping, so I'm going to ask you the question. Talk to me about some of the enrichment classes that you've been adding, added. I know last year you, you peppered it with some ridiculously fun stuff that I wanted to go to. And. And.
I'm going to sign you up.
Yeah. And just again, I, what you bring to this program, you know, I know you have to raise the fees, and I know everything like that, but beyond fees is value. And you talk about getting what you pay for. I've seen your program. And a long, long time ago, my kids participated in this program, and it is beyond awesome, what your group is doing. So I just want to applaud every effort that you and your staff do. Now talk to me about enrichment.
Yeah, listen, we're doing so many fun things. We're doing culinary. Our own, Mr. Dan Nemeth, who's the ultimate culinary man, right, from Hammershold. We still do junior master chef. The kids love it. They just, these kids love to cook. We did fashion, where they're making their own outfits. They leave and they're wearing what they made. This woman comes with all of her own sewing machines. They pick what color fabric they want. They go home with pillows and purses, and they made shorts last year and a T-shirt. And they, they are so proud of themselves, and should be, because they're leaving with these fabulous items. As I mentioned, the drones, the kids are loving these drones. Forensics, we had National CSI come in, and he sets up an entire room of the crime scene. And they have to keep going to the crime scene and learning how to test and who did it. And we're bringing that down to the elementary level. We call that like our STEM mysteries, the secret agent lab. And every week, it's a new whodunit. And the kids always blame, you know, whoever their site leader is. Oh, it's Ms. Mickey, she probably did it. And she's like, no, I didn't do it. And they have to actually do reason and deduction to figure out what, what has been happening. And we're continuing, continuing to do art at all the levels. Look, we have amazing art programs in our district, but this adds to it, those that have a love. Not every child loves sports. Not every child loves art. We want to just keep giving all different options out to our kids. I just had a meeting today with Andy Scanlon to talk about how we do a pipeline with our programs leading into middle school programming and getting a love of things at the middle school level before they get to Churchill, and doing things at the Churchill level before they get to the high school. So we just had the discussion today, like throwing ideas around about fashion and other things to get our kids excited before they get to the high school, so they have a better feel for what kind of programming that they'd like to take, that the whole high school offers. So we're doing a lot of new things. We're looking at teachers in the district to start working for us, and coaches, and to bring that to our, to our families at a younger age. So lots of fun things continuing to go on.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Reese John. Oh, he's going to be a gentleman, so I will say Mrs. Reese.
Oh, if you want to go first.
Yeah, you'll go first.
You sure?
Yes.
Well, thank you, as always, you know, we appreciate all your hard work and your programs. I reiterate what Jeff said, you do a fabulous job.
Thank you.
And I wanted to commend you for adding Churchill, because.
This is something we talked about, right?
And, and I think it's amazing, because it's, as these, these programs are, it, it, you know, fashion, sewing, all these things continue. I mean, the kids are still interested in a lot of these things. And they learn it as a class, but sometimes you can't take that class. Like, for example, if you're in orchestra, you can't take a lot of these electors, which are great electors. So we're giving them a low-stress opportunity to just explore things, as a kid should, right?
Absolutely.
And, and at a cost that's very fair and, and cost-effective for the parents. So really, just thank you, and please continue what. So really just thank you and please continue what you're doing. And, you know, I think even there might be a taste for it at the high school level. I know our high schoolers are busy, but you know, I like sewing, you know, art. Not everybody is in the AP art, but they still love art, right? And they want to have a chance to do that. So I thank you for exploring.
Yeah, no, thank you so much.
Ms. John.
Okay. Emery, thank you very much. I love your presentation. Your presentation excite me. Thank you very much for the great program. Your program not just helps the children do their spare time, but actually opens their eyes up. For example, my three children had the forensic lab. So after they come home in my house, we have a criminal defense lawyer, we have a detective, we have a prosecutor, and then I have to be service judge. So that's, very good. They know, they learn a lot. Okay, has been said good sense, but I have small question about your budget.
Sure.
Okay. So from the budget, you list the unemployment, insurance compensation, FICA contribution, health insurance. How about the general liability to cover the teacher and the children in the program? Is the school district cover, provide the insurance policy?
Yes, it's a blanket coverage. It covers everyone.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's my small question.
I'm glad your kids love the forensics. I didn't realize.
They enjoy it a lot.
Wonderful.
Mrs. Chu and Mrs. Smith.
Just a comment, as a, as the old-timer at the table, you know, my kids did not have the benefit of having these programs as kids. I had to schlep my kids to Middlesex County College and Brookdale where they were offering these programs. And it's such a benefit to have it like right in your community. So it is, you know, so great that we can offer this diversity of programs to our kids right in our community.
Thank you.
Didn't you actually serve, I think, I used to chair committee programs years ago, didn't you serve as a committee member from the community? Did you do that? Am I wrong? Am I remembering correctly?
I did. I, I think I was on that committee as a community member.
As a community member before you came on the board.
Yeah, that's why I first met you. Just how it's grown is incredible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Woss.
Well, you know that, you know that as much as I love the presentation, I miss terribly being in your programs. I love all of your programs. And I'm really looking forward to rejoining the early morning program and ASK again next year. And I cannot say enough about ELA, which I remember myself for the past three go-rounds with my youngest was filling rapidly. Just every season was quick get it in because all the slots will fill. And I appreciate that we, that the class sizes are kept at such a good teacher-to-child ratio. Is there, I know you'd said that early morning program and ASK is impacted by parents working from home, but it seems that ELA is still filling rapidly. Is there any projected thought to, you know, expanding the size of ELA since that program continues to just fill and fill?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're at capacity, so you know, if I get more classrooms, I'll, I'll do what I can. But yeah, I mean, we're, look, we're maximizing what we could get, right? And there's all the reasons of the number of classrooms. So I would love to if I could. But you know, right now, I mean, as I said, we're over 180 students, which is a great number and a great-sized preschool. But as you said, you know, the state says for preschool, I can be at 10 to 1 ratio. We like seven as a max because again, I think you get the best quality out of that, and we miss her too.
We had, we had to go all the way to ELA to find our very best friend who turned out to live in the house right behind us. We had no idea. We missed it terribly. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Louise, you get to bring it home for our budget presentations.
I hope you're turning it warmer. Bernie's going to make a little warmer for you. We don't want it for you.
She's getting the coat.
I'm with you.
It's cold, I know.
He don't want to touch it.
It is that cold.
It's the polar express. In here, yeah.
Whatever on the park, the bush go there.
I'm going to go get my parka.
I know.
Thank you very much. Thank you for making it a little bit warmer.
Yes.
All right, guys.
We're almost there.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the proposed special education budget. I've been fortunate enough to work with the incredible special education staff, the instructional aides, the related service providers, our child study team, and really spend the last year immersing myself in our programming. Part of that, we have to consider the administrative code, we have to consider special education law, and really look at what we need to do to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all of our learners. I want to thank Dr. Figaro, Dr. Valeski and the board for always providing us with your support and your passion to meet the needs of all of our students. We have a lot of unique students in our, our district, and I am proud to be leading that department. So some of the things that we have to consider and the responsibilities of special education is providing education for students between 3 and 21. This year is the last year that the state had approved students to stay till 22 years old. Next year it goes back to 3 to 21. We also are advocating for our students with special needs to ensure that we're meeting all of their individual needs, whether it's assisted technology, transportation for wheelchairs, anything that really will ensure that they are provided the same opportunities that our general education students are provided. Also to look at least restrictive environment. We are a very inclusive school. Least restrictive environment is different for everybody. It could mean a student in a general ed classroom with accommodations all the way to students that are out of district with one-to-one nurses. And still, it's called least restrictive environment because it's individualized to that student. We also look at FAP, for inappropriate education. That means that we are providing them the opportunity the same way we would provide for a general education student. You know, as you've heard before, costs have risen across the board. That is not different for us where we want to maintain the programming that we've been so proud to provide for our students by maintaining that same caliber of education. Another piece is assessing the effectiveness of our programming, to look at data, to go into classrooms, to see that the students are in the proper program, to utilize evaluations and Edge a Climber, which we use to look at assessments across the district, and make sure that our programs are continuing to work for our students with special needs, and then also maintaining compliance with New Jersey Administrative Code. So this is an overall view of special education and where we're spending our money. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about tuition of out-of-district placements next. But we provide students extraordinary services, meaning that we have one-to-one nurses that walk with our students to make sure that they're safe and that they are provided their medical needs throughout the day. We have adult assistants that walk with our children that go from class to class with them, some that ride the bus with them. But safety is always a priority and giving them the opportunity to have the same exposure to our education as their general education peers. In order to provide the programming and specific learning opportunities for our kids, evaluations are needed. So child study team, they perform our educationals, our psychologicals, our socials. We have psychiatrists that we do psychiatrics for, bilingual evaluations, so we want to test our students in their home language. Assistive technology, you've never seen something more beautiful when you hand a child an iPad and they're able to communicate their thoughts and their needs for the first time. And also the training that goes into, for the teachers in order to provide those students the continued care to continue their growth in their words or PT, that they're able to stand for the first time, that they're able to go on the playground. Support services, teacher of the visually impaired, teacher of the deaf, testing materials. So you can see there's a lot of pieces that go into the special education budget. And there's a lot that goes into just maintaining what we currently have. If you go. So this is a visual of out-of-district placement. So I said in the last slide, I was going to talk a little bit more about this. As you can see, prior to COVID, we were on a significant downward trend in bringing our students and keeping our students in district, which, to really understand the impact of keeping a child in district is they get to eat lunch next to their neighbor, they get to ride the bus with their siblings, they get to talk about, oh, I had that teacher, I had, you know, that music teacher, I had, you know, oh, I sat with, you know, his brother. They're able to communicate at the table. They're having a similar experience. We're very fortunate in East Brunswick. Our numbers are very low. But since COVID and since the unavailability of early intervention strategies that were given or interventions that were given to students prior to them coming to us, a significant increase in OTPT speech evaluations, a significant increase in psychiatric programming, medical programming, we're starting to see that there's a need to send students out of district. Now, I've been lucky enough to be a part of the board in other positions in this one where we looked proactively at how to keep our kids safe. And the budget that you're going to see today really is kind of putting that vision in looking at proactively how to program for our students that we're able to maintain as many students as possible in district. There will always be a need for out-of-district placements when it comes to medical and psychiatric care. But if we're able to maintain students in district, for example, we have 13 self-contained autism classroom, classes that are able to push out into the generalized setting. And like today, there was Lawrenceburg Allies, so we had general education students working with special needs students. And you walk into the room and there was a laughter and playing and children running around with children. And it really is a beautiful thing when we're able to do that. So we'd like to continue doing that. So the budget you see today really is looking at how to continue staying proactive about our programming for our students. And then overall, you have the pie chart that you can look at. You can see out-of-district tuition is quite expensive. So when I'm talking about proactive and talking about programming within the district and supporting teachers in learning how to do alternate curriculum or how to support our students within the buildings, that really is a way that we can continue keeping our kids here. A thing about out-of-district tuition that makes it really complicated for us as well is that we cannot project out how many students we think may move in, may need out-of-district programming, nor can we stop the out-of-district schools from changing their tuition. So we will receive a letter that says we're raising by this percentage and there's nothing we can do about it. It makes it quite complicated in developing a budget that is consistent from year to year. And then you add transportation costs and the rise in costs of other things. It's quite complicated. But with the support of, you know, the board and student services, we're really looking at trying to continue the authentic programming that we've had for our special education students. And it's been a gift because we have people move to East Brunswick for our programming. And I'm really proud to walk into the classrooms and to see what we're doing. But I also want to continue supporting the teachers with the resources that they need so that they're providing our students the same education that all other students are, are receiving. So that's special education in a nutshell as quickly as I could do it. I appreciate you listening to me. I'm excited about, you know, what we've done so far and I'm excited about seeing what we can do in the future.
And it shows you did a wonderful job. And it's funny when you talk about out-of-district placement because I'm looking back how we've cut it, you know, almost in half. When I first got on the board, that was one of the priorities, was trying to bring all the students back in-house because it is so much better for them, better for the bottom line. So I, I realize COVID took a little bit of a hit for you, but I'm incredibly impressed that you're doing that, so. Which side wants to start? Mr. Winston, you want to start?
I do. Mrs. Hannah, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I think you left out a major piece of what you have going on that you shared with me the other night in the finance meeting, and I think the public deserves to know that. The quality of education you provide to special education is unmatched in, in, in what I've seen in local districts. And what, probably what most don't realize is that you shared with me is 20% of the students in our district fall into the special education category, and the number you shared with me was roughly 1,600 students. With the changes of demographic changes we have and development changes we have coming on into the district, it doesn't seem to faze you. You know, each year you come in here and you're ready to stand strong and adapt to the numbers to your point that you don't know what you don't know. And I'm not going to say you make it look easy because I know it's hard, but boy, you do an outstanding job in hitting a moving target.
Thank you.
So I really applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Great point. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Santana. And I know you want to explode. I was going to say that brings us to the end of our budget for the evening, but Mr. Juliana is going to bring it home for us completely before I go to you, Dr. Bowley.
So we are in the budget, throes of the budget preparation season. We have budget presentations that will take place February 16th, March 2nd, and March 16th. A major driver for the budget is the governor's budget address. That won't happen until the end of February unless the legislature changes it, which has happened frequently in the past and make it a later date. But based on this information that we have, state aid would be released March 2nd, two days after the governor's budget address. That has a major impact in terms of our calculations and being able to determine what the budget can sustain. Without knowing what state aid is, we don't know what requests can actually be recommended for approval. So tentative budget adoption is only two weeks after receiving state aid, that's March 16th. And then the other statutory dates, May 4th, we will have a public hearing on the budget, and then final adoption would be May 11th. I want to point out that on tentative budget adoption, while we have to adopt a tentative budget, there is opportunity from that date up to before the public hearing to make adjustments as necessary. But once we're at the public hearing, that is the budget that will be finalized and, and put into place for the following year.
Thank you.
That's it. I know that wasn't exciting, but it's necessary.
It was exciting for our budget groupies out there. Now you know what the dates are, so you'll know when to, to join us. All right, Dr. Bowley, sorry. You're on. You're going to talk to us about the Start Strong assessment results.
Yes, moving right along. Next exciting topic. So when I presented the assessment results earlier to you this fall, these, these results were not available, our Start Strong assessment results, so I'm here to present them to you this evening. At this time, we do not know the likelihood of future administration of this assessment, so that'll be, to be determined. So on this slide, we see that the Start Strong assessment was administered in English Language Arts, Mathematics and Science, a 60-minute, 160-minute unit in each of the subject areas. Grades four through 10 participated in the Language Arts exam. Students in grades four through eight, plus the students in Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II, participated in our math exams. And science was administered to our students in grades six, nine, and 12. And just to clarify, the Start Strong assessment, the name of the exam that the children take reflects the course that they are enrolled in, in the fall. So the course that they were enrolled in last fall, which they are currently taking right now. However, the content of the test is reflective of the prior year's standards. So here we see the scaled score for the support levels for the Start Strong assessment. We have three levels of support that are indicated. Level three is less support may be needed. Level two is some support may be needed, and level one is strong support may be needed. And as you can see at the bottom, the SLA performance levels are, there's a five-level scale and performance band, which is not directly comparable to the Start Strong scale. Here we see our demographics and our enrollment statistics. The New Jersey Department of Education requires that districts report the assessment results by subgroup. This slide shows an overview of the state subgroup classifications and the percentage of each of our students who are enrolled from 2020 to currently 2023 and the trend. of each of our students who are enrolled from 2020 to currently 2023, and the trend. We certainly are proud of our diverse community of students, and we know that our students are more than a subgroup, they're unique, complex individuals, and to that end, our staff, um, our great staff provides different, differentiated supports and intervention strategies to meet academic, social, and emotional needs for our students. Our next slide talks about our enrollment statistics. Um, the Start Strong was administered this fall, uh, to all of the students, including our newly just enrolled students in our district. This chart shows the demographic statistics for the newly enrolled 315 students in grades four through 12 who would have participated as brand-new East Brunswick students. So we can see here in the green the percentage of incoming students in these subgroups compared to our district average, and this illustrates the critical importance of our commitment and support for our programs, including those for our English language learners and our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged students. And, um, since the Start Strong test does test on the prior year's content knowledge and standards, um, our newly enrolled students were actually tested on, uh, the instruction they received in their prior school district or country of origin. Next up, we have our English Language Arts results. Um, and although the distribution of scores by grade level is different than it was last year, overall, we do have, uh, similar, very accurate, actually, exact, um, overall proficiency numbers, which is suggesting that on a whole, the district did not, um, gain or lose proficiency in this exam in this area. We are pleased to see that our Hammerhill Fifth Grade Upper, Hammerhill Upper Elementary students, uh, showed the lowest percentage of students identified as needing strong support. Additionally, our students at Churchill and the high school also showed strong performance in ELA. So although I just told you that the, um, Start Strong Assessment Scale and the NJSLA Assessment Scale are not correlate, do not correlate, um, we did want to find out about student growth. So, um, we did anticipate that students who were identified last fall as needing the strongest support would demonstrate significant growth all over the school year, and therefore, when we received our SLA scores last spring, we took a look at student growth for those students in the strong support tier from last fall. And basically, we tracked those students and to see how they performed and the assessment for their NJSLA assessment results. And as you can see on this slide, between 41% and 67% of students achieved a performance level of a 3, 4, or 5 on the NJSLA. So this is even more impressive, giving that, given that the Start Strong, um, measures prior year content. So these students had to gain proficiency in up to two grade levels of content knowledge to achieve these levels. So that's quite impressive. Now we're taking a look at our ELA support levels by school. Individual differences in, um, schools may be attributed to a variety of factors, but overall, our elementary students, uh, around three-quarters of them achieved a level one or two, uh, two or three. Next, we're looking at our subgroups for Language Arts. The DOE has provided us with support level data aggregated for our subgroups, including race and ethnicity. And these results mirror observations at the state and national level with regard to historically underserved populations. And we are certainly, um, committed to ensuring quality instruction both is both accessible and equitable for all of our students. Here are additional subgroup support levels, students with disabilities and 504 plans, economically disadvantaged students, students currently and formerly enrolled in ESL, and by gender. We can see a dramatic increase in achievement for our students who have exited our ESL program as compared to students still receiving ESL, which speaks to the, um, strength of our ESL program. And as you can see, the former English language learners are close to their native English-speaking peers in their ELA performance. Moving on to mathematics, here's our overview. Again, the math exam tests students on prior year knowledge. Overall, the district saw positive gains with a five-point increase of students in level, who, who were requiring level three support. Next, we're looking at growth. This graph is showing last year's Start Strong overall mathematics results and the gains made by students who scored in the lowest tier identified as requiring the strongest Over the school year, students in Algebra I showed the highest growth, with 62% of students in the lowest Start Strong tier, reaching an NJSLA score of three, four, or five. And students in our upper elementary school and our elementary schools also showed significant improvements throughout the school year. Moving on to our, uh, support levels by school for mathematics. Again, individual differences between schools may be attributed to a variety of factors. Here we're looking at subgroup support levels in math by race and ethnicity. And further subgroup achievement. Again, there is a striking improvement for our students who have exited our ESL program. As noted previously, strong support is needed for our students who are economically disadvantaged and for our students with disabilities. Moving on to science. Science was administered to our students in grades six, nine, and 12. The results are approximately equivalent to the prior year, showing no significant increase or decrease in the number of students in each support level. Here we see the subgroup data by race and ethnicity for science. And our further subgroups. As with the ELA in math, uh, students exiting the ESL program are well-positioned to achieve in similar range to their peers, which demonstrates the strength of the, our ESL program. And the results for science show us that our students with disabilities and our students who are economically disadvantaged need additional support in all academics areas. In conclusion, our great teachers and specialists use a robust set of tools and strategies to assist our students who are struggling, and they work very hard every day to help all students reach grade level standards. The gains we saw in this year's Start Strong results, particularly in math, are a testament to their hard work. Thank you.
Great report, Dr. Boley. A lot of good information. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Reese?
Well, thank you so much for this information, and just to see that I have the right testing. This was the test that came right after the kids came back from, from being out, you know, in virtual learning. So this was a big shock for a lot of the kids who hadn't been taking tests for a long time. So for folks that, you know, don't, they may not realize that that's the timing of this test.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
But, um, just to, just to understand, you had a list of, uh, wonderful intervention tools and strategies that the district is using. Uh, maybe you could give me a little more about the before and after-school tutoring?
Mm-hmm.
How's that being used to help some of the folks who may have trouble in these different areas?
Yes, um, we have been providing before and after-school tutoring for, for many, many years in the district. We were able to expand, uh, some of those offerings using some of the SIR funds that the district received. Mrs. Tibbetts, who oversees student achievement and the curriculum, is managing that program, working closely with each of the school building's principals to, um, identify students who may be eligible and set them up with a teacher who is willing to provide that tutoring.
Okay, so there, there's like a formula for who's, who's able to, to access that tutoring?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'm just gonna, you know, I, I looked at this, you know, especially the Algebra I, because a lot of that shows up on the SAT, and, um, the kids have to remember it like two years later. So it's tough too on, on that too, but, um, I'm a little confused, like the improved, right? In the spring, it's still, the kids did a lot, I don't get the percentages on the one, this one with the, the comparison, maybe you could explain the improvement?
Yes. Yes. So Algebra I is definitely tricky because it's not aligned to a grade level. So the state is assuming that ninth graders are taking Algebra I. Where here in East Brunswick, our eighth graders take and some seventh graders.
Correct.
So they, they're in Algebra I, and in the fall, when they're just starting Algebra I, they're taking an, an eighth grade exam based on last year's grade level, and according to the state, the grade eight test, quote, "grade eight," specifically those standards relevant to algebraic concepts," end quote. So they're taking the exam for the course that they are just starting.
Oh.
So of course they're seeing growth in the spring because they've learned the content.
Learned some more concepts, right?
Correct.
But when you have this percentage, 30, 30, this, this one with the 36% and the 24%, that's not equalling 100. What, is that just improvement from, from the fall?
These are the students who were identified, uh, in Start Strong in the fall needing, who may need strong support.
Right.
And those of that cohort who were able to achieve a 3, 4, or 5 on the SLA.
Oh, from the ones that were, that's from the fall?
Correct. Yes, that's right.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that. So I mean, again, I, I, I hope maybe next year we'll have, and even this spring was more accurate, but maybe next year we'll have more accurate numbers.
Well, again, we're not sure if we'll be, if this test will continue.
We're advocate, actually, Mrs. Reese, we're advocating that we not have the Start Strong next year. And we've had conversations with Governor Murphy about that. So we would rather have instructional time than assessment time.
Yeah, I mean, you know, of course, that is helpful, and, and it's always good to have data, but this is in addition to the ELA? Is that, is that, or is it instead of the ELA? I still don't understand.
It's in addition to the NJSLA.
Right, so, I'm sorry, so, so, yeah, I agree, and I think this is overtesting. I mean, again, this is my, only my opinion, but I think it was, I can tell you from my own kid, it was a shocker to have a test when you're just coming back, and I don't think it accurately measures the student achievement and the teachers, the work that the teachers do in this district. And I thank you for reporting, and it's good to see, but I just, I think that, um, it was well-intentioned by the state, but it, it actual, and the time that you have to spend assessing all this could be probably better used. And, um, but I, I just think that sometimes, uh, yeah, I, I, I don't, I, I still don't understand what was the purpose of throwing a test after the, the time, an unprecedented time where kids were, and teachers were struggling. And this is not directed to you, I mean, you, you probably, I have better focus on this than I do, but I, I don't see the point of that. I don't, I don't understand, how does that help a kid who's just coming back and they're trying to get back into the swing of just being in a classroom and then to be hit with hours and hours of tests? I, I, I was a teacher, so I, I can say, I can speak from some expertise, I'm not, you know, I wasn't a math teacher, but I, I just feel like this is, um, the wrong direction.
But poverty could measure where they're at.
And, and we do too. We, uh, there, um, Dr. Zinbicki, we're, can you raise your hand? Uh, NJEA wrote a letter in opposition. The School Administrators Association wrote a letter in opposition. There are a variety of state, uh, entities that represent the professionals in the state, the professional teaching administrative professionals, that, that wrote in opposition to this. Uh, but Governor Murphy took a, uh, an approach to allow the, uh, Commissioner of Education to make that determination. Early in the year, she said it was going to be administered, um, but Governor Murphy since has started to listen to entities. Uh, and we're getting, um, a very good sense that there may be a change, uh, coming for next year.
Great to hear. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
And Dr. Boley, one question only, and it comes on, on the heels of, uh, Ms. Reese's. Now that we have this data, what are you going to do about it? Do we care? I mean, are, are we really going to alter anything at this point?
You don't know how much we care.
You know what I mean? I mean, what is it, how do you react to this? What changes, because you read this, are we going to do anything differently as a result because of this assessment?
The Start Strong data?
Yeah.
The SLA data, when I was here in the fall, and we broke down by subgroup, and we committed to take a deep dive, working with the building principals to understand achievement gaps that are particular to the population in their schools, and coming up with action plans to address those issues, to support all children.
And the tutoring is always great. I mean, that's a big thing.
Yeah.
That's a big, that's a big portion, and I mean, I, I.
And during the day, we have our reading math specialists as well.
True, that's true.
Just a 60-minute assessment, you know, within a couple of weeks, getting back to school, um, I don't know, you know, seems, seems like a pretty high-stakes game for pretty early in the curriculum.
I wouldn't disagree.
Any other questions, Mr. Hung?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Okay, this is two years' study, Start Strong testing result. When I tried to analyze the data, I'm, I'm not that happy, very disappointed. It doesn't matter, this test will be continued next year, but it provided snapshot of this, our education. So look at this, uh, ELA. We have 4,360 students take, participate in the test. So for two years, we have 19% of students at level one, which need strong support, which end up with 828 students. That is a very shocking number. When we look at the math, we have 4,803 students take the test. For two years, 32%, 28% is all very similar, okay, need strong support, which end up with 1,400-some students. That means we need, so, so many students need help. We look at science, we have 1,896 students take the test. So 24%, 2021, 2022, 26%, which end up with, we need 455 students and 493 students need help. Okay, I know people don't like this Start Strong test, and then let's get another number. So then, slide next to the, the math. So, okay, 19% students need strong support for the 2021, then we get them to the NJSS test. So that's by, it's approximately only 25% of those 19% reached meet expectation and exact, exceeded expectation, which means, you know, hopefully my math is wrong, which means 35% of 824 students, which end up with 288, still not meet or partially meet the expectation. We have been talking about leave no students behind, now we have hundreds of students have problems. Please prove my math is wrong.
Mr. Hung, your math is right, but I, but I would argue that the assessment is not valid.
No, no.
And, and if you, just let me, for a second, for a second, like an athlete, before an athlete goes to perform, they warm up. You don't go on the field cold and start to play at peak performance. And having this assessment, the students basically got to school, unpacked their material, and, okay, folks, here we go, you're going to be given an assessment. I, I think the timing was, was fraught with problems. I think the assessment was not scientifically validated, and I think that the state was remiss in administering the assessment on the tail end of a pandemic.
You talked about social and emotional health and the needs of the children.
But again, it shows us where we're.
I, I don't think it's representative. I don't think it's representative. I contend it's not representative.
Barbara, Barbara, I'm sorry, let's just let him finish.
Let me finish, okay? At the beginning, we were told that the test content is for previous year's standard, which means a knowledge, when you learned it, is your knowledge. You're not, maybe during the summer break, you lost something, but when we look at the number of students, this number is not small number, please, it's quite a big number. So that's things we need to look at. I understand you guys working so hard, try to get all the resource. So first of all, I hope you prove I'm wrong, my math is wrong, my statistic is wrong, hopefully you prove that. Second, please tell me how we can help to provide the resource. Let you guys support our students, hundreds of students, that is quite a good number. So when I analyzed this data, I, to be honest with you, I was very shocked. I understand people says, oh, the timing is not good, and this Starting Strong may not continue next year, but it's telling us a true snapshot of our student in this school district. East Brunswick is a blue ribbon school, and we are paying so much tax. We anticipate our students, now this number of students could not meet the expectation. The state expectation standard, I believe, is very low, it's not, East Brunswick standard should be higher than this number. So there's a lot of work we should do, even this test will not be continued next year. There are lots of work we need to think about, we need to do. Please prove I'm wrong.
Mr. Hung, if I may, I agree with you, we do have a lot of work to do to meet the needs of all students in this district. I just would offer for your consideration, these scores are significantly higher than the state average. The test validity is under question. All students, including those students with no English acquisition, who enrolled the day before, had to sit and take this test. So there are factors to be considered, but we strive and work very, very hard every day to understand student needs and then be able to respond to those.
I trust you guys, I know you guys are working very hard, but the result, we need put some attention to the result. Maybe I'm wrong, okay?
No, you're not wrong.
But just as my opinion, that's what my reading from the data.
Very good points.
I mean, I don't know what to say.
Wait, excuse me, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna ping pong, I'm gonna go to Mr. Winston, Mr. Carangelo, Mrs. Reese.
Mr. Hung, you raised some really good points, so, and I know you're a scientist, let me ask you one question. As part of science, to prove theory, its replication has to be available to prove a fact. We take another assessment test, so I'll put to you, the other assessment test that takes place during the year, how does it line up to this one after, to Dr. Valeski's point, the players are warmed up and they're ready to go? What comparisons can you make? Is it an improved assessment on the later in the year test?
Yes, it's an improved assessment and there's significant growth that's been documented.
So that, so that in itself, hold on, hold on, Mr. Hung, I agree that this could be valid, but in terms of replication, the data doesn't support it. A test taken later in the year with much of the same material that is covered and delivered in a different way produces different results. So as a scientist, explain to me why you put so much weight on a test that appears to be flawed. One of the tests are flawed. I've, we've heard rationale why this one way may be, so one of them is wrong. Is this the wrong one, or is the other one wrong?
Okay, so your question already answered by the same presentation.
Okay.
So when you look at, let's say, use ELA as the example. So this page just shows the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two test result, and the next page, it take out the nineteen percent of students need strong assist assistance during the, using the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the second test. So it shows that among those students, among those students, okay, it's about thirty, about approximately twenty-five of those students meet expectation and exceed expectation, but look at this number. This use Level Three, approaching expectation, which does not meet the expectation, we should cross this bar out. So that's why I use twenty-five percent, which means, which means
Which page?
Which page?
So which means the second test corroborate the first test result.
Is it this chart? The comparison chart?
Yes, this is NJSS Spring 2022 result.
Yeah, of Level One NJSS Four?
Yep. Yes, that's, those students, when they take another test, the result does not have too much difference. It's very small portion of this student changed their grade. So this, this chart use very low standard, counting the approaching expectation, which is approaching, not reach the expectation yet, so we shouldn't count it as reach the expectation. But I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, I just, it's my opinion, that's my concern.
Fair concerns, thank you. I'm gonna go to Mr. Carangelo.
You know, I've seen
Let's try, I'm so sorry, excuse me one second.
I've seen many years of this.
Can we try and have a little, I know you are, I apologize, but it's hard to hear
Yeah, I've seen many years of this going on, you know, my daughter's going through it right now, and I'm not gonna take offense to what you're saying, and I kind of respect it, whatever, but the kids are improving. From the five oh four at a high need, as it go through the school system, that goes down significantly, I've seen that so many times with so many kids. So to put, you know, we're doing bad on one test, you know, in one little snapshot, when you can go over the life of the entire kid from one through twelve grade, they're improving tremendously. So, you know, I mean, I'm not trying not to be empathetic to you, but now that you did the research here, however, the kids are improving over the years. And you can't just say, okay, they're not doing well now, we have to look at it, how are they performing over the years? And it does play that out where they are performing much better, and I have a, you know, example of that in my head.
Okay, last comment, okay, then I will quit. Well, I'd like to sit here. We should keep entire school district in our heart. We need assessed school, entire schools students by the number, hundreds of students. This is not a small number, not a single one, not two, not ten, not one hundred, a few hundred. That's my concern is, I'm now thinking about a specific students, not school stu, one single school, just the school district.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I risked.
Thank you, no, I, look, Mr., you're impassioned, but that's why we're here, because we care for the education, I get it. We have a couple more comments, so I wanted to make sure this side gets
I just had a quick question, maybe you could go, this is the confusion, this page, maybe you could go over this with us again, is this a percentage improvement?
Yes, the students who demonstrated that they needed, may need strong support on the Start Strong test, last fall, not last fall, fall of twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
And then their performance last spring, in spring of twenty-twenty-two on the SLA.
And so this represents the improvement that they got at each level?
Correct, yes, yes.
For example, for fourth, ELA Four, there was a sixty-seven percent improvement in the spring versus
Of the cohort of children in that grade level who had demonstrated that they may need strong support.
For ELA in this case.
Correct.
Right, so just from the fall to the spring?
Yes.
This line here, for example, eighth grade, where they needed support beforehand, they showing a forty-one percent increase in their score levels and their ability to have less support?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so you feel that the numbers from the fall to the spring show this improvement?
Yes.
And so is there a way to get a more of a breakdown of the, when do we get the spring numbers, or did we get those the spring?
I presented that in the fall here.
Is there a way, maybe at the next opportunity, to show apples to apples to us, because we got this really long, wonderfully, it was a great report for the fall one, right?
Yes.
But maybe putting it together with the spring one, and we can see side by side, because it was months ago, right?
Yes.
I forget from what I ate yesterday, right? So if you put the two together and we could look at them, I think it would make easier for us to see, because I understand where Lee was coming from when I first read the scores, I was very concerned as well, because we don't want to see any children, you know, having issues in any subject areas. But then I remembered what this test was, and I remember the timing of this test, and I'm not saying that there isn't something to be learned from a kid, you know, there's always something to improve, that's, the district always does that. And I'm not saying we can't improve in certain areas, offer more supports, more targeted supports, listen to parents' concerns, add things, absolutely. But I don't, don't know that that one test, at the time that it was given, a material that they learned online from two years ago, is a clear indication of their future abilities, right? So in the spring, they're improving, the numbers are improving, so if you, I think if he was, if we could all see the comparison of the fall and the spring, and to see the improves, then if we don't see an improvement, then we can take action on that. But right now, you're looking at a test that, number one, the efficacy of the test hasn't been proven, because it's a brand-new exam, and the kids were basically tested, I don't know the whole process, I'd have to be told how that, how that test was vetted out, but it's sort of like a car that you use the first time, and they have recalls on the car, right? And then the second year, they get the car right, that happens with a test. So when folks listen to this discussion, I hope they
Okay, so be very helpful for the board.
I'd be happy to provide that for you.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Mrs. Gwos, because I
I did, I, I love interpreting test scores, I am a geek for test scores, I am. But I just want to say, this particular test, Mr. Hung, has been called into so much question, not about how students scored on it, and truthfully, I'm looking at this going, I'm enjoying the effectiveness of the math here far more than I enjoyed the test itself, the pieces of it that I was able to see. I just feel like the problem with these scores is not how well we're analyzing the data, but the validity of the test. Does the test measure what it purports to measure? So we can administer it over and over and over again and check our children's growth, but if the test is not a valid testing instrument, it's not going to give us information that we can really use. And we test a lot, we do the NJSLA, we did the PARC, before that, we did the HESPA, we've got years and years of testing. All I wanted to say was, this particular tool has been called into question all over the state, and is, you know, many different groups are looking at this tool saying, it's gathering information, but is it gathering information about what it says it's gathering, or is it just gathering results that don't really reflect our math abilities? All right, oh, did you have a question? I can't leave you out.
Well, I just kind of had to make a comment here, because, you know, I think data, data is very important, and it's valuable to use data to learn and grow, and you kind of closed it up by saying, what are we doing to support our kids? But it's more than just the numbers, it's about what's happening in the classrooms and what the teachers can assess. So there's more data that you can leverage for, for action.
Absolutely. Our teachers gather tons of formative data, and that's certainly much more actionable and relevant
Yeah, and what's more important than the data is, what are we doing?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Ollie, and as always, you understand that the frustration of the board is not aimed at you.
Understood, understood.
But I
But we appreciate it.
But I do believe, based on the comments from the board and the concerns, and probably from the public, we'll do that further analysis and provide an additional presentation to the community.
I'd be happy to.
With what I believe is better-informed data about the performance of our students.
That'd be very helpful, thank you so much. Is Mr. Giacobi still awake?
Most exciting performance
Most exciting, well, you know, best for last, tell us what we can't do.
I'm gonna try to make this brief, since you're all, were here last year for the presentation.
And incredibly ethical people.
Incredibly ethical.
We came back just to this, we came back just to see your presentation.
And I'm not gonna go through the whole PowerPoint this evening. So, each year, we go through the New Jersey Ethics Act, and the New Jersey Ethics Act is codified in eighteen A, which is known as the Code of All the School Laws, and it governs board members' conduct and requires them to be ethical. The body that oversees the board member's conduct is the School Ethics Commission that is part of the Department of Education, and it's made up of superintendents, staff members, and laypeople. And they determine whether or not, they do two things, they issue advisory opinions, so a board member can get an advisory opinion on whether or not they should participate in something, or they hear and determine whether or not a school board member has committed an act that violates the law. And if you violate the law, it can go from a reprimand, a censure, a suspension, and up to removal. What I always, and probably the single most important thing is, the board, you set the policy, you ultimately adopt the budget, you make sure the schools are well-run, you don't run them in day-to-day operations. Where board members get in trouble is when they start trying to micromanage or direct the superintendent to hire somebody specifically, that's his role. You hire the superintendent, he is your quarterback, you, he makes the call, he says who he wants on the team, and runs with it. If you're dissatisfied with the way the schools are running, the person you hold accountable is the superintendent. And that's why you have the annual evaluation of the superintendent, and you set board goals for the superintendent and his team to implement. What I want to highlight, it's really, it's incredible what I've seen in the last twelve months. I've been practicing school law now for almost thirty years. I can tell you, in the first twenty-five years, if you saw an ethics case once a year, once every other year, it was a lot. Right now, we are involved in dozens of ethics cases. I've never seen anything like it before in my life. They're coming from all facets, members of the community are filing them, board member against board member are filing them, boards are filing motions against a certain board member, just read the paper, it's everywhere. There was one recent case that was, a group up in Somerset County voted against the new curriculum. They didn't believe in it, they're newly elected, they voted against it, it still passed, but the four board members who voted against the curriculum, this was the health curriculum, a member of the community filed ethics charges against them, said you violated the law. I mean, it's become almost a cottage industry where people are going after board members. And at the end of the day, what I tell board members is, let's just be practical. Why is it important to be ethical? Well, it's important to be ethical because you serve the public that elects you. But on a much more practical thing, you're talking about budgets, you're talking about twenty-five hundred dollars to have, you know, the first downlines on things. A school ethics commission, because the law, if you're acting within the confines of your role as a board member, you're indemnified, that's what the law says. But even if that happens, and someone files an ethics complaint, you have to notify the insurance carrier, insurance counsel is assigned, there's a deductible, it costs thousands of dollars. And there is a district right now that we recently have been retained to try to help calm this down, they've probably spent six figures on ethics cases, among board members. I mean, it's just, it's gotten insane. Where board members, and I just want to give you two cases that, to kind of leave you So the School Ethics Commission says that board members can, you know, go on social media, write things, as long as you have a prominent disclaimer that says, this is my own opinion, I'm not, this is not endorsed by the board, you do have a First Amendment right. So for example, that First Amendment right, if you want to support Matt Giacobi for President of the United States, you could write that if you want, that's your right. Where board members get in trouble is where they post, and the School Ethics Commission has just ruled this, where they post the disclaimer, and then they start going after a staff member, where they start talking about a position that the board is taking, or they don't like how the board's taking, they'll say, well, it's my opinion. School Ethics Commission says, oh, no, it's not. You can't, it's not a go free from jail card, you can't use the disclaimer and then start writing anything you want. And the one case that I'll tell you about is, it was a, it's a board member, it's a board president in Bergen County, and he did not like the union, didn't like him at all, didn't like the union president, who was a teacher in the school. So he started his own blog, and on his blog, prominent disclaimer, right at the top of it. And And then on almost daily basis, he went after the teacher. How she's no good, how they should get rid of her, my opinion, my First Amendment right. School Ethics Commission, the NJEA actually retained an attorney. The attorney filed ethics charges against them. He was removed from the board because they said, that disclaimer meant nothing. The disclaimer is really, you're, you're opposing, you know, a redevelopment in your town. You're opposing, you know, so you've got to be very, very careful when you engage on social media because the School Ethics Commission is getting much stricter in looking at that. The other case I want to tell you about, and this is incredibly scary, is a board member in this county, kind of north of here, I'll leave it at that, didn't like the way the board was going. And she took confidential documents because she liked a certain administrator who was in, who had litigation. He was alleged that he was passed over for a, a higher level administrator position for somebody else. She took confidential documents, put them in a sealed envelope, and dropped them off at the employee who was filing suit's lawyer's house. Now, no one could figure out how it was. The only problem was is there was handwriting in it that revealed it was hers. So that clearly is not within the confines of her role as a board member. She was acting extraordinarily bad. So ethics complaint was filed, actually, the whole board voted. They appointed the president to file ethics charges against her, and it's going forward. Her attorney filed a lawsuit against the board because the board said, we're not indemnifying you. We're not even notifying our insurance because what you did was not within your role as a board member. The court just ruled, you're not indemnified. Pay for it yourself because that was not within your role of a board member. So you've got to be very, very careful. I think that the School Ethics Commission, the courts are looking. And I, and frankly, for, for, I've been doing this for almost 30 years, I said. I've been out of law, I graduated 30 years from law school. And in my 30 years, for, for most of my career, the fights and the, and the rancor and stuff was at council meetings. You come to school board meetings and they're nice and quiet, like three people would show up. It's exact opposite now. This is kind of the battleground really across the country. And, and this is where a lot of things happen. There's a lot of emotion here, you know, things have changed. I think after the pandemic, people, there's a lot of just pent-up energy and a lot of folks are focusing on school boards. So just be very, very mindful that you're, you're under a microscope. Be careful what you write, be careful what you say. It, as I've always said, nothing is urgent. If you have a question, I'm always available. Ask Dr. Valesky, ask the president, can I get a legal opinion? We can give you a legal opinion, don't do it. I can tell you a thing, we had a case over the weekend, I was getting a phone call. A board member had got an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission that said, you can't do this. So on the weekend, this is a new client, was called up and was asked, can I vote on this? I said, well, did you read the advisory opinion? It says you can't. So my advice to you is, follow the advisory opinion. Well, the board member said, I'm not going to file advisory opinion, I'm going to vote on it. So that's a coming attraction. So if you ask for an advisory opinion, you're going to want to follow the advisory opinion. And, you know, the, the whole goal here is, my role, I represent the board. I'm the board's counsel. My role is to help each one of you. So if you have a question, I don't want to see any, you're volunteering your time for your community. You're doing a great service. I want to make sure that you guys don't misstep. So if you have a question or concern, you know, make sure you get in contact with me and we'll give you guidance immediately on what you should or shouldn't do. Anyone have any questions? All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us honest. Megan's tapping.
That was fun.
That was fun. Okay, well, that was a very lengthy amount of presentations this evening. I appreciate everyone's patience in getting through them. It's always fun during budget season. And we had a couple of things that we just couldn't put off any longer, so I do apologize for that. So now brings us to what we've all been waiting for, right, our, our audience? I'd like to think the people are here just to kind of watch us, but I know the people want to talk to us. So, "The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant will be limited to three minutes duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary." And the two things I always like to remind everybody when you speak to the board, that we are here to listen to you, you are here to talk to us. So again, do not take our silence as not caring. To that point, anything that needs to be later addressed. The two lovely ladies in the second row, Janet and Karen are here. And if you make sure that they have your information before you leave, then any further follow-up can come through there in Dr. Valesky's office. So that being said, who would like to speak with the board this evening? Yes. And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name's Niran Sharif, I live at 5 Shady Lane.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
Niran Sharif.
Thank you.
Sorry. So I'm a member of the EAD Committee. As you know, we were here two weeks ago at the last board meeting. I'm just here today to truly thank you guys for giving our community and our students and our children the opportunity to speak to you. I was here at the meeting, I know it was very lengthy. So we really appreciated your understanding and your open-mindedness. I can't tell you how much it meant to the children of the community to finally be able to speak on this topic and to be heard. They felt empowered and to be able to use their voices for change. So it was really a teachable moment for our children that we all got to witness. And so actually, my two boys were here and they both spoke. It was the little kindergartner, if you remember.
Yes.
So. Yeah, well, he was very direct, that's his personality. And it was, I mean, it was such a huge moment for him, it was a huge moment for us. And, you know, I was very proud of him. And so just on behalf of the committee and the community, like, we really wanted to thank everybody. And of course, please feel free to reach out to us with any questions. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Niran. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with the board this evening? Do we have little ones? Oh, if there's any little ones, I would prefer that they go first in case they want to go. Oh, and she's got the bears, I love the sweatshirt. Sweetheart, if you could just tell us your name and the school you go to, maybe your grade. You don't have to tell us where you live.
Hi, my name is Ariel. And I go to Central School. I came here tonight to talk about Envision Math. I used to love math. My favorite part was playing Freckle and Extra Math. They were really fun, they helped me learn more. I came here to tell you why kids like me struggle with Envision. The problems are so hard. Kids don't like tests because the questions are too hard. I feel embarrassed when I get my test back. Some kids in my study group say, I'll always, I'm always going to get bad grades. I'm never going to learn Envision. In my class, we have a test every week. We never get a break. Maybe you guys can make it more fun because it's not fun anymore. I miss loving math. This makes me sad, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ariel. Is there? And if you, going back to the adults, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
I'm a kid's size, but I am an adult. Antoinette Evola, 45 Merrill Avenue.
Name again, please.
Antoinette Evola, 45 Merrill Avenue. I wanted to come to support my daughter because she's been telling me since she's been struggling, how she doesn't feel like she's smart anymore. So when I told her that you guys were the ones who voted on this curriculum, she said, well, mommy, can I go talk to them? I was like, all right, let's go. I did have the chance to watch the November 2021 board meeting when you guys were presented. And I did reach out to a couple of you, I'm still waiting to hear back because a lot of the concerns that you guys had about the curriculum are actually what we're going through now. I put some notes together because I really wasn't going to talk, but since I waited for three hours, I will. There were things that were said that were going to make it easier for parents and for the children. Multiple sessions for parent development was one of them. And that was supposed to be done this spring. It's February 2nd and we've never had any parent development. The developing for the teachers in the spring was supposed to be the proactive preparation plan to avoid any issues for transition for parents and students. The teachers didn't get really evaluated until October 24th. I know that some of them did do their programs in the summertime, but from the feedback we're getting, it's really just learning the curriculum to log in, log out, maneuver it, not really how to teach the children. And for a lot of the teachers, it's the first time they're working with Envision. I find that the teachers who are, who do have experience with Envision are having an easier time teaching it to, to the children. I'm very lucky, I have the best principal in the town and he's been amazing. Dr. Boyle was the first to tell me to reach out to him and to the teacher. And they're doing the best they can, but I just don't feel like it should be on their shoulders to fix the problem of being rolled out improperly. So that's what I'll have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sheetal Manny and I reside on, at 17 Jason Drive. I come to you today wearing two hats. One, as a parent of two kids enrolled in the EB School District. And second, as an educator of higher learning. I'm, I'm trained as an optometrist and have been in academia for nearly 20 years as a professor and director of residency education at Salus University. My gray hair probably suggests I'm an educator. During this time, I have also served and still serve on various curriculum subcommittees. So I understand and appreciate the time and effort it takes for all parties to closely inspect an existing curriculum with potential shortcomings and then implement a new, robust program which is supposed to allow the students to learn and incorporate higher order thinking skills, all the while hoping that the rollout of this new program is as seamless and effortless as possible. Now, let's be real, that's wishful thinking. However, what we do recognize is that for a program or a curriculum to be successful, we need continual feedback from our constituents, the student body and the faculty who teach them. This effort is collaborative, it's transparent and deliberate to assess what is working and what can be improved. For elementary school education, for program implementation and success, there is an added variable to this equation, and that is the parent. Though we appreciate the Envision Parent Night efforts put forth by our district for grades K through 4 and for grades 5 through 6, as well as the recent parent, parent survey which was sent out by the district, we feel those efforts would have been more impactful had they taken place earlier in the year. My husband and I, as many parents, are stretched thin with many work and household commitments. As much as we want to help our children do supplemental work at home, for many of us, this involves a relearning of concepts which were taught to us in the 80s and 90s in a manner that is unfamiliar to us. The decoding of a complicated work problem requires such a level of skill and understanding that even a parent who is highly educated is stumped. This creates frustration for the parent who is then not able to project enthusiasm for math onto their kids. I'm not here to merely complain. I came here today to request that we work together.
10 seconds.
To ensure that our children's educational enrichment in math is fulfilled with the intention it was meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheetal. Good evening, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm the less significant other of Sheetal Manny. I'm Dr. Ron Manny, 17 Jason Drive. So I'm the data person for our talk, our, our little speeches. So I'm actually a Rutgers professor, I'm a neurologist at Robert Wood Johnson. I'm an East Brunswick, 1996 high school graduate, proud graduate. Thank you for all, Dr. Zimbicki was my teacher in Hammerfield. Thank you for all that you've done, all you've done. This, this system has helped me be successful. I'm also a neurology course director, 160 medical students per year. I help direct that to make them good neuro, neurologic proficiency. And I have a master's in science in statistics and epidemiology. I know math better than the average Joe. So we've seen goodness, we've seen some good things with the math, but there's opportunity for improvement. What the parents, about 10 parents, many in the audience and some students did is they helped create a survey. I didn't know the school was going to do it. We launched a survey one day before the school did. I'm going to tell you the results. I emailed them to Dr. Bowley and, for the board. 120 respondents replied over just 48 hours. We just distributed the survey by texting, friends, people in East Brunswick we know. One child per survey, we asked, different from the school survey, we asked that the survey be done with your child present so you can actually get direct input answering the questions, which I think is more meaningful. We had K through 6, there was slightly higher representation from 4th grade and somewhat lower representation from kindergarten, 5th grade. All the schools responded. 36% said they were not satisfied with the math program this year. 47% were less satisfied with that current year curriculum than the prior year. The, when I, I, I used a little bit psychiatric questionnaire about anxiety and some other mood disorders and asked, were you, are you bothered, such that you're nervous, worried, frustrated, easily annoyed, agitated by the math program? And 59% said they had those symptoms at least weekly or more. Of the ones that responded with that symptom, 54% said it was more than half of the week. The, the parents are working extra to try to help with the math at home. 85% said they regularly helped their child with math at home. That was an average of 2.5 hours per week. 21% responded.
10 seconds.
Saying more than five hours per week. 22% said they use a tutor regularly outside school. I have 25 questions, I'm just hitting the highlights. There's other good data I've sent to Dr. Bowley.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lenosaurus and I live at 754 Cranberry Road. I'm a parent of a 1st and 4th grader at Warrensdorfer. In addition to being a mom, I'm the director of program evaluation at a small school district who uses Envision. And prior to this, I was a teacher for 10 years. I would like you to imagine sitting in a classroom. The teacher is teaching a math lesson and you are trying your hardest to follow along and understand. But by the time you made sense of the first example, they're on the third. Then it's time for you to practice on your own. You sit there and look at the question and try your hardest to answer it. You ask yourself, what did the teacher say? Where do I start? What is the question asking? And while you're still sitting there thinking and trying, time is up. How would you feel as that student? Because that is how the students are feeling in your math classes. That is how my 1st grader feels, who loves learning and is trying her very best every single day. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional about this. How much longer is she going to keep trying? How much longer is she going to keep loving to learn? And that's really my biggest concern. Our teachers are wonderful. They are doing their very best with what they are handed and what they are told to do. Our teachers and our students deserve better. If we want our students to learn, we cannot teach for coverage. One must teach for understanding. And that means slow down, address student needs, look at the data, make adjustments to what you are teaching. If students have not grasped the concept, moving on to the next lesson or unit is not the answer. Slow down and address the gap. Our students jumped to a curriculum they were not prepared for with no plan to bridge that gap. They are now paying the price. Students are not learning math this year. They are flying through a curriculum and feeling bad about their lack of understanding. Instead of creating learners, learning lovers, we're creating future dropouts because that's what happens. Please, 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 slow down. We don't need to cover the whole curriculum this school year. We need to make sure that students are actually learning what is being taught. We don't need our kids to sit in a classroom and feel confused and depleted. The solution is simple, slow down the curriculum, address the student needs, reteach where needed, use additional and provided resources. And please, put the test scores back on the tests. Hiding them is not solving the problem. It's making it more challenging for students and parents to know where they are. Thank you.
Amen.
Good evening. Hi, if you could say your name and.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Dots. I'm, I live at 363 Cranberry Road. My daughter. My daughter has struggled with math through basically the whole of elementary school. We have done everything from getting tutors to reaching out to professionals for extra help. In third grade, my daughter was provided a wonderful teacher by the name of Mrs. Crowell. She allowed my daughter to get her footing in math and feel comfortable and confident in math. To watch my daughter this year slip back into feeling less confident and feeling ashamed hiding tests in her folder and asking, mommy, please don't be mad at me, I tried my hardest. Hurts me to hear my daughter become so frustrated and call herself stupid and dumb. Makes me, as a mother, feel like a failure, and I know that I have done the best that I can and tried to go and find any resource possible. Every night after I come home from work, I prepare myself to do math homework. I come in, we lay our homework on the table, and I prepare myself to teach myself the lesson. Sometimes I'm confused, thank you. Sometimes I'm confused, and other times, you know, it seems like maybe I can figure this out. But I cannot imagine what my daughter's little brain feels and how defeated she feels when she's in a class and she can't understand where she's even at with something, like not even from the beginning to the end. I teach myself a lesson, I teach it to her, I reteach it to her. My daughter is also part of the extra math class that is provided. She spends, I believe, 15 minutes in the classroom and then the rest of the math period
Ten seconds.
With her extra math help teacher. And to come home and still not be able to retain the information, I'm at, I don't know where else to go. Thank you.
Good evening, you want to state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Robyn Zernitzky, 3 Tracy Drive. I'm probably a familiar face to many of you. I actually am an actuary, an associate of the Society of Actuaries, so math, I take it pretty personal. I want people to like math. I was one of very few females that majored in my major that's successful in my career. So just want to add that in, that I'm not just speaking out of turn. I want to just continue with some of the data elements that we were able to get from the survey that we initiated. About 46% of students had little to no understanding of how to use online materials and workbook resources with Envision, as opposed to last year being 54% that knew the resources. So everyone knew the resources for the prior. Last year, with the old math, about 25% of people did not have an understanding of the resources, so I feel like we're having a really big jump, and there's an obvious reason why people don't know the resources, parents and children alike. No one was told. It's not intuitive. Forty-three percent of people are regularly using materials outside of what is supplied by the school. Of those 48%, use them at least a few times a week. I mean, I don't, I don't understand, you know, we're East Brunswick, right? We should be able to capture what is needed for these students within the classroom. The other thing I want to bring up is, you know, I'm really happy I was here for the Start Strong conversation. A lot of what was spoken about, about Start Strong, I can mimic about Envision. I mean, the efficacy of the curriculum hasn't been proven by taking the curriculum with fidelity. Many, many very good districts within this area do use Envision, and they use other resources to supplement. Now, I watched that November 2021 meeting where the BOE asked great questions. One of those questions was about, why are we doing it with fidelity? And no other districts are doing it with fidelity. There's a reason for that, okay? We've spoken to other districts, teachers who have said, I've been teaching Envision for years. We have to supplement. The best outcome that I'm seeing with my students and my children is that teachers are doing things a little outside the box. My student's teacher warned her sixth-grade class, there are six questions on your midterm that are completely unfair, poorly written. Please don't panic during the exam. If you get to those questions, just don't panic. Why do we need to tell our kids this? Why can't those questions be pulled? Why are we doing this to these students? Are the tests measuring what the students need to be learning? My answer is no. Take a look at the tests, take a look at the data. Please, keep digging further.
Thank you, Robyn. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Hi again, Mary Ann Tanyo, 17 Buckingham Drive. Like Dr. Manny, I too, I'm a product of East Brunswick Schools, I graduated in 2001. Mr. Husar was actually my US History teacher, and I couldn't have been more thrilled when I found out he was going to be my children's principal, because he's incredible. And everything that he has tried to do to, you know, fill in where this curriculum has lacked has been tremendous, and Mr. Husar, I applaud you, really. And I'm sure it's not just him, I'm certain it's every principal in this district who's been scrambling to pick up this mess, because I really don't have any other words for it. I also did watch the November 2021 meeting, and a big thing that came up was, why was there no pilot? Like Dr. Manny, I'm also a scientist, I have my doctorate, I'm part, I was part of a rigorous program, so I know the advantages of having a pilot, you don't just jump into these things. And the response was, from one of the board members, we don't have a budget for it. So when we don't have a budget, that means our children became guinea pigs to this district, and that's not acceptable. The other answer that came out of one of the board members was, well, we just came out of an 18-month pandemic, and the data from a pilot won't really be accurate. So with that same logic, we decided to jump into this curriculum wholeheartedly and fully commit to it. It just doesn't make any sense, and again, our children became guinea pigs. And I cannot even blame the department chair or the curriculum supervisors, because they also had to scramble with the lack of a pilot. They had to work with the resources that they were given, which were clearly insufficient. I think every person who's spoken here has been highly educated and has done more than enough research, and I hope that you will take these concerns seriously. I stood here last time and I asked you to please solve this. We need resources, and the answer can't constantly be, there's no budget. That's not acceptable, this is East Brunswick. You know, part of the reason that I was accepted into my doctorate program right out of high school is because I was an East Brunswick student, and I was repeatedly told that. Actually, the dean of my school happens to be Dr. and Dr. Manny's neighbor, so he also lived in East Brunswick, and this school, like, this district just held to that standard. This is why I live here, this is why I pay like an arm and a leg and some organs to live here, because I know what my children should be getting, I know what NJSLA scores should look like. I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mr. Hong. I don't believe that this is going in the direction that it should be. I understand we're coming out of a pandemic. No one has been more impacted by this pandemic than my family, and we actually lost my husband to it. So I understand, you know, what this all means for the community, but I'm asking you to seriously take that into consideration. These are actual people, and I hope that this emotion will infiltrate you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? Come on up, please state your name and address for the record.
Evening. My name is David Pavlik. I live at 19 Buckingham, Mary Ann's neighbor. And my son attends sixth grade at Hammershold. He started the year at Hattikfa. And Hattikfa, there are not enough negative words in the dictionary to describe it. I hope you caught that, Hattikfa? Thank you, yeah. And we brought him into Hammershold, and we've been very, very happy with that transition. He's also a product of Central last year. Can't say enough about Mrs. Keeley, definitely deserving of her award. And Mr. Husar, fantastic. Now, my wife, she has been a teacher in Brooklyn, and the reason she can't be here is because she has to get up at 5:00 AM and go to work tomorrow. She's been involved with Envisions for over 15 years in Brooklyn. She is very, very fond of Envisions, which is going to shock a lot of people, but that's fine. The problems with Envisions is not Envisions, the flow of Envisions going from one step to another is fine. It's actually really good. I have a physics, math background, and I have an IT background. The flow of Envisions is fine. The problem is when you have managers, instead of leaders, rolling out a program like this. When you become a manager and you're more concerned about budgets, that's when you fail. I have a Disney background, I believe in Walt's philosophy. Walt once told Roy, you will find a way to pay, you will find the money yourself to pay for this attraction that I want built, and the Matterhorn got built. Roy went on vacation for two weeks, and Walt went up to his Imagineers and said, who wants their job? So I ask you, who wants their job? Stop being managers. Find the money, we don't have the budget. Not an excuse, that's an inexcusable answer. Not acceptable. I also have a Navy background, rank hath its privileges, you are privileged to sit there. Rank also has its responsibilities, and rank has its accountability. And if you can't be accountable, and you can't find the money, and you can't do your jobs right, you will be removed from your position. That's not a threat, that's the voters that will make that decision. I'm not threatening. The voters, though, are getting upset, and it comes down to lack of clarity, lack of leadership, lack of training. You have failed to make these things happen. Now, in terms of standardized tests, my son has visual processing disorder, wasn't diagnosed until before fourth grade. After COVID, we finally were able to get him tested. He wasn't able to finish that until last year in the middle of fifth grade. I will refuse to have him take any of these standardized tests. Those standardized tests are bogus, BS, they are not making robots. We're making individual children
Time.
Who are unique.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. Would you like to speak? Come. Give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, Heather James, 2501 Commons Drive. Very nice to see you all again. Apologies to my fellow parents, I feel bad actually speaking right now as I'm not speaking about Envision, but thank you for your advocacy. And I would encourage you to please come back, because as we all know, it may take many meetings to fully express yourself, and that is fine. So keep coming. So I am here just to request that you please remember that we still do have a busing issue on Warrensdorfer Bus 2, specifically at the intersection of Commons Drive and Kingswood Boulevard. Unfortunately, that very busy thoroughfare is still where our bus is located, and we still do have traffic and parking problems as a result. We have recently been sent letters by our condo board about those traffic and parking issues, and I know that the condo board did send this board a formal letter asking to have a discussion, so I would just implore you to please respond to that when you are able. I know there are very large issues, but looking forward to next year. If we're going to continue starting Hammershold and the elementary schools at the same time, we really still need more buses. I mean, our bus is still consolidated sometimes. It is better than it was at the beginning of the year, but it's not completely solved, and it's very disruptive to both the morning and the afternoon. So, you know, as we're looking at budgets, just here on behalf of my fellow residents, the busing issues are still serious, there are still safety concerns, and we would just like you to keep that in mind, and appreciate your response. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening? No? Just making sure. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, and thank you all for your comments this evening. And since this was quite a lengthy evening, does anyone have anything that wants, that you need separating out before I move the agenda? Mr. Sizmar.
Financial Services Number Seven.
Financial Services Number Seven. Sure, no problem. Financial Services Number Seven.
You can still ask questions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can ask, remember, as always, whenever we move, it just means we're consolidating, so if something has to be separated out, because you're going to vote different, then you do that, but whenever, when I call for discussion, you can bring up any mention of anything in there. But to Mr. Winston's request, we're going to just wait a minute, because it was hard to hear. Okay.
And Staff Development Number One.
Sir, excuse me.
Okay, sorry. So you got the Financial Services, and you got Staff Development?
Number One.
Number One.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the?
Staff Development Number One.
Noted.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right then, I'm going to ask for a motion on this evening's agenda.
Without Financial Services Number Seven, or Staff Development Number One.
That's why I keep you around. Mr. Sizmar and Mr. Carrangelo, we got double marks tonight. Okay, is there any discussion on, yes, Barbara, any issue, any item on the agenda this evening?
I have a few questions, not more.
Well, you get three minutes. Just kidding.
So did Financial Services, the whole thing, get?
No, just Item Seven.
You can ask anything, but not Item Seven. And Staff Development Number One.
Okay, number one, the bus is to go to Fairview, is that the same bus, the one that came in at the Louisville Suburban Trails, is that the one we've used before? Is that, is it a new bus?
It's new. Mr. Crotchfield is shaping, he said that it's a new vendor.
It's a new, who did we use, I don't remember who we used in the previous?
Stouts.
Stouts. So Suburban came in much lower, is that the reason why we're using Stouts?
Because they came in lower. They were a lower bid, so that's why we're
Were required to take
Yes, we are.
Correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then in Number Seven, niche.com?
That's not on.
That's not on. That's the one, still Financial Services. Okay, so that's pulled. Okay, and then on Student Services, Number One? Pulled also, okay.
No, 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 you're fine, Staff Development was pulled. You're fine.
Student Services.
It's okay. It's okay, we're a little late, it's okay.
So I'm just a clarification, academic challenges, like, you know, all these are great clubs, I just, I understand this is being deleted because of lack of student participation. I just had a question, I noticed on the website, it says Science Olympiad and Sports Club and the Interview of Fitness were pulled at Hammershold because of lack of teachers to do to that club. So, you know, are we seeing like some need for teachers for those clubs, or is it just?
Got to figure out, heads up our clubs and activities.
We do have, we do have coverage for most of our clubs and activities, there are occasionally when we don't. The clubs that have more students in them, a lot of times they'll go to their favorite teachers, and then they'll usually get somebody to join, but we do on occasion have a spot open because of a lack of a staff member to run it. That is critical to any of our clubs and activities.
Okay, I mean, so, but, you know, and it's a, they get an additional stipend to run those clubs?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Okay, so I just, you know, I mean, obviously, the clubs are important to the kids, and I, you know, I know that staff issues are all around the country, I just, I feel sad to see Science Olympiad, that's a big one.
Ms. Reese, also, when we have students, and I can't tell you off the top of my head how many students wanted to be in the Science Olympiad, but normally what a principal will do, or assistant principals, depending on the level, if they see there are students that were looking for something, they'll try to get them involved in something similar or something else. So they have some outlet, and so they do have, you know, in many cases, a chance to, you know, be a part of something similar to that if they can.
Okay, no, of course, and, you know, we have a lot of activities, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Mrs. Reese, Mr. Winston.
On Community Programs, Number One, many years ago, Groucho Marx was asked, how do you get to Carnegie Hall? And the answer was, practice. And it is so unbelievable to know that the East Brunswick High School Orchestra has been invited to, and if we vote correctly, will play at Carnegie Hall in New York. I can't think of a greater honor for so many of these students who've been playing, and we talk about orchestra And we talk about orchestra and the expertise and the music, which, you know, I've been at many of those concerts, having a violist in the family. Holy smokes. What, that is just the coolest thing ever. And our kids are going to get a Carnegie Hall, so let's make sure we vote that one correctly. I think it's great.
Very true. Mr. Hong.
Yes. For the monthly school report, Dr. Federora, would you please give some explanation for the residence update in the middle of the report? Do the numbers?
Residence?
The residence update.
Mr. Hong, you talking about, I'm sorry, draws or?
The September 7th of July, 2012, we have ten residents. There are.
Temporary.
Still in half-year period, still in month of term, and the renewal update thirteen. So I have tried to what are those numbers and why those numbers could not end up.
So what happens is each year, we have temporary residents. Within that temporary residence, there may be several students. They get renewed yearly. So there may be several students in a household that will be renewed. So the numbers from year to year may fluctuate.
So if there are East Brunswick residents, so there should be East Brunswick students. So why are those students labeled as temporary students?
Because some of our students have, live in, I'm sorry. Some of our students do have temporary housing. So they are, we do take them in. They are students. Sometimes they are what's considered hardship. So they have certain situations where they may be living with another family or maybe living, you know, with a relative, but they don't have their own particular home at the time. Okay, there could also be, right, there could also be foster children involved in that equation as well. They, we do take them in. They are students that we have in our district. But they're considered temporary residents until they have their own residence acquired. But that may take several years in some cases. They may be temporary residents for a while. So every year, we have to renew those temporary residents.
I also want to call everyone's attention to Number Eight, the gift from Lawrenceburg Elementary School, PTA. Very generous, $9,887 to be used as a purchase of an upgraded sound system for their multipurpose room. I do have a question about that. So, excuse my technological ignorance. That's just going to be the speakers, the microphones? That's quite a bit. So is everything else functioning? Do they have projectors, whatever else they need?
Yes.
In there?
Our IT department, yes, has that available.
Because this is a newer school, so I was surprised to see that they had poor quality. When I say newer school, it's not funny.
Yeah, I'm not sure the details of what happened to the other equipment, but, but, you know, the technology has changed. And I think this might be wireless connectivity.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, well, thank you very much to the Lawrenceburg PTA. It was incredible gift. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, then I'm going to ask the secretary to please call the role for tonight's agenda minus, if you remember, Financial Services Number Seven and Staff Development Number One, which we'll do after.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes, but abstention, Board of Education, Item Number One.
Noted. Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries. I am going to now ask for a motion for Financial Services, Item Number Seven.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Second by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion? And Mr. Sizmar, I will look to you.
Yes, please. And if I'm saying it correct, niche.com?
Correct.
The goal of $8,390 is to try to attract more students to East Brunswick Township?
Uh, no, sir.
Can you explain?
Yes.
Because that's how it reads to me.
I'm sorry.
It's like to.
Yeah, it is twofold. Last year, the board graciously agreed to enter into agreement with niche.com as a partner. Niche comes in and rates districts on a variety of factors, survey information. And you don't have to pay Niche anything to get ranked by niche.com. So last year, the, my initiation was to try to raise our score, to try to have a lower score, more attractive, making East Brunswick stand out. And it's a promotional tool. It's used by realtors. It is used by community members to research schools. It's not our attempt to attract more students. It's an attempt to make East Brunswick look better against its peers, quite honestly. We invested last year, and I had wanted to do it for one more year to see if we could get results. So this is year two of that effort. But that's, we had talked in terms of promoting a referendum for the high school, using that as a tool. Their individual site set up for each school. They check in with us at least monthly to update data on all the schools and for us to try to promote our image.
You may or may not know this, but, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'm sorry, because I just went over this today. Does the township itself pay for that? Do we know that?
No. As far as I know, they do not pay for niche.com. I'm not, if they are, I'm not aware. And you are, you're talking about the township government, right?
Yeah, because it says to discover schools, neighborhoods, and companies.
Yeah.
So I would imagine it's a tool for private industry. It's a tool for townships.
I'm, I am not.
We have a big redevelopment in town. I don't know.
I, I am not aware of the relationship.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot with that. I was just thinking, like, I didn't want to do something that was already be done.
Correct.
Like $8,300, it's a lot of money.
Is it possible to find that out?
To.
Certainly. Yeah, I, I am not aware, though.
Or maybe at least a shared service. You know, because it seems like it benefits them maybe even a little bit more than us. Because, quite frankly, to what end? I mean, let's say we do great.
Hang on. I think I'm next.
One second.
I think I'm next.
There seems to be discussion, but I'm just wondering, would the board be in favor of possibly tabling this item till next time?
I'll make a motion to table.
To get the, thank you, Mr. Winston and Mr. Sizmar. Any discussion?
Oh, I wanted to say something about that.
Best discussion.
So, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with someone in town making, what, thirty, forty negative reviews. I don't know how valid this is, though, because if someone could just come in and make us look like D's instead of A's, you know, and people read that and we don't catch it in time, that's not to our benefit either, so.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons. I think it'd be helpful if we will move this to another meeting when we can get some more of that information.
So I remember that happened.
It was actually the result of that, of our inquiry, Mr. Jacoby's office inquiry, our threat of legal action, that they went in and reversed the data that was collected from this one individual. And so this is a reduced price over what somebody typically would pay. But this was, this was an offer made by Niche last year to bring it in at a very basement kind of level, according to their pricing. But quite honestly, it was an attempt to promote the district, for us internally to promote the district. But I understand the board's questions, and I'll find out about the township.
You can get some information. Actually, just going to formalize it. All in favor of tabling it? Opposed? Okay, then great. We will look forward to hearing what the township has to say on that one.
And I have a quick question with, if we could find out also, are they helping us with those confusion about mixing? You know, we're only, you just said eleven and twelve, and our rankings for the high schools suffer because of that? So they, is that, maybe when you inquire about that, how is that going to work? Are they going to work on refining that number for us so we don't suffer compared to other high schools where there are nine, ten, eleven?
I'll get you some information.
Okay. So may I please have a motion now for Staff Development, Item One? Moved by Mr. Winston? Don't all jump at once. Mr. Carrangelo, thank you for the second. Any discussion, Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, please. Thank you. Couple of questions, and this is a compliment to our staff, so don't take it as anything but. We're asking to have people come into the district to assess our classrooms. If my math is correct, it's nearly $300 per hour for two days of walkthroughs, one in Churchill, one in the high school. This company, ISA Institute for Student Achievement, so that's, I guess, the basis of it. Stuck out to me. It was a lot of money for what is on here. So my first question is, I guess, who thought we needed this? Who thought we needed to bring in outside people? Because I'm going to compliment our staff. We have Dr. Bowley, we have Mrs. DiNino, we have Mrs. Tibbetts out there. We have incredible people that are in our classrooms every day. So then when there is an ask for somebody to come from New York for $300 per hour for two one-day walkthroughs, it causes me pause. So I would like some, who needs this and the justification? Because I think our people are talented enough to do it ourselves.
We totally agree. Our staff is par none. This organization can provide the walkthroughs to look at student engagement in our secondary math classrooms and provide an analysis of what they're seeing and recommend some professional development opportunities for the teachers regarding that analysis.
Okay, so my second question is a follow-up to that. Who provides this future professional development training that ISA recommends?
Well, it would depend on the recommendations, but they could provide it if we're satisfied with their analysis and their recommendations.
So my, my, my point is, again, and I'll end it on here, I won't belabor the point here. We have talented teachers, supervisor staff, up to you, Dr. Bowley. Got nothing but compliments for you. To pay someone $300 an hour to come in and tell us, "Well, you know what you guys need? This." And they're going to provide the product that we need? I am absolutely voting against this, and I do so complimenting our staff. I think our staff, our teachers, our professional development director, if I'm using the correct title, they can figure this out without spending $3,500 for somebody to come from New York to sell us something. They should come here for free and do an assessment if they're going to provide a product. I've never heard of this in private industry where you pay someone to come in and.
Audit.
Audit what you need to buy their product.
And they're the provider? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's not a product, but I understand what you're saying.
Professional development is a product. It's an instructor that comes in, so, yes, it's not a tangible product, but everything is, everything is a product. That's my view on it.
Thank you.
And like I said, I say that as a compliment to you on down, to everybody in the staff. We don't need it, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Sizmar. Mr. Carrangelo?
Has this worked in the past? Have they showed value to us?
I haven't worked with this organization. They were referred to me by a colleague who has worked with this organization and has seen the results.
Has we, have we used other organizations? Have they provided benefit to our district?
I mean, we partner with Teachers College and we've seen great. Yes, to come in.
So there's value in it.
Okay, Mrs. Reese.
So this is, just the Educational Testing Service, ETS, that's the SAT, you know, that, so is that the purpose? Is that to help with the test scores? I mean, it's not bad.
I mean, we're always looking for continual improvement. And to look at secondary math students and their engagement in their math period in a block schedule, it could provide value from an outside lens, could provide us with some valuable insight that we may not be seeing.
So from the other.
That was the intention.
I'm sorry, from the other districts, what kind of recommendations generally have they made? You know, I'm just, I don't know this company well.
I mean, analyzing their student data to form groups in the classroom for the teacher's ability to differentiate, so forth.
I mean, again, I agree with Mr. Sizmar that we have a talented staff. I think staff development is always helpful. You can, you know, being a teacher, it's always one, it's a little, it's a lonely profession being in the class, and it's always good to collaborate with other professionals and to learn new techniques and to always be improving. You know, I just, I think it may have value if it's from the Educational Testing Service. I see, you know, I see this concern about the charge for them to come to assess. But if it's to help with the testing, honestly, you know, I'm mixed about it, but I have to say the SAT is difficult for a lot of the students and the ACT. So that may be some value in that as well. I mean, in a perfect world, it wouldn't, in my view, I mean, it's always speaking for myself, there'd be fewer tests. But in reality, these kids are going into the real world, they have to take tests. So if they're going to give you strategies or helpful hints on, like, certain areas of math that we may be missing parts of it due to COVID or what have you, there may be some value in that. I just, I, is there a way maybe you could provide us more information about this organization or what they do?
I could. I mean, we won't know what the analysis reveals until we have it.
Yeah. No, I mean, because we don't really, we don't know, as you do. We don't have the benefit of your knowledge of this organization, and there's lots of different organizations. And so I think it's, you know, I understand wanting to know more. I know, I know ETS, you know, it's well-known, ETS. If it's part of ETS, they would probably have some more information that would help us to better understand.
Okay, Mr. Winston?
Yeah, just a few points on that. Mr. Sizmar brought, I mean, brought up a great point, and it gets me to thinking of how many times I see on this agenda where we're bringing in outsiders, and admittedly, it's not that much money on a relative basis when you have 160-plus million-dollar budget, but when you see $3,500 here, $1,700 here, when we bring in outsiders. It causes me just to ask a few questions. To Mr. Sizmar's point, we have an enormous talent pool in this district. We have some of the smartest people I've ever met anywhere, and they work in this district. And I trust you more than anybody to evaluate deficiencies that may need attention. And in a situation where we believe that it simply perhaps needs a little bit more scrutiny beyond our purview, I would be more inclined to spend $3,500 on assessing eVision than I would on a general walkthrough based on things that we've heard by some residents. And then I start then to even dig a little deeper. And I know, I know, I'm a dinosaur when it comes to being a student in this district, but there was a day even when plays were done here with Elliot Tabenslag as the director. And then the music, the music department was Kathy Spatafino. And the dance instructor was, who was it?
Tibidou.
Chelle, yeah, Tibidou, right. Chelle Tibidou, right. And we, and we kept it in-house because we were that good. And somehow or another, like, and then, and then I'm thinking, well, jeez, that calendar thing came up a couple of weeks ago. We're going to go outside and get a survey from somebody else when we are fully capable of putting together a productive calendar that represents this demographic. I think we need to slow down on the outside people. To Mr. Sizmar's point, I rarely invite a salesman in to evaluate my situation unless I'm getting my roof repaired. And other than that, is probably where I would draw the line. So to that point, I would support a no vote on this. I don't have any, any desire to table it. I just don't think we need it. You know, the few people that are here today from the staff, you guys are great. You're great at what you do. We don't, this is not.
Well, I'm guessing it's not supposed to be indicative of not trusting our staff. So, because I heard the question asked, but I don't really understand the answer. Where did it come from? Like, when we talk about we're trying to protect the staff, is the staff the one, who's idea was?
Collaboration with the math department, always looking to move the work of the department forward.
So the staff we're all trying to protect are saying they're the ones that wanted? That's what I'm asking.
The math department leadership in collaboration with myself?
Yes.
Looking to bring a healthy, non-partisan lens.
I'm only asking that because there's been concern about the fact that we're somehow, like, you know, overlooking the, you know, genius of our staff. I just want to make sure. If you're saying the staff is the one recommending, then it becomes a different story than if we're doing this because we somehow don't trust an area of it.
In collaboration with administration. And it has no bearing on our teaching staff.
Okay. If it's something that they would find helpful.
We're looking at student engagement during the math period.
Yeah, I think the answer was math administration, not our teachers. I just, again, I don't want to dwell on this, but a walkthrough is a snapshot of a, I won't use the word staged, but the people that are in the. I won't use the word staged, but the people that are in the buildings every day are going to have a better assessment than a one-day walkthrough in one school. I don't, I don't see the value, how, I don't care how talented a person is for a one-day walkthrough when you know they're coming and whatever. And I'm not saying our teachers are going to stage a lesson or whatever, but the principals, the math specialists, the teachers themselves, these are, this is where we're going to get the real data for need. I'm sorry, not, not a person walking through for, you know, an hour and a half lesson. I'm not sure what the block scheduling, what the time is, don't quote me on that. We had a different time schedule when we were in high school. So I just, I just, I do not see the value in it, and I don't think the teachers have asked for it from, from the answers we're getting.
Never be sorry for sharing your opinions. That's what we're here. Mr. Corangelo?
To support you, in my school, I have teachers who need things. I don't hire someone from the outside to come in and evaluate my classrooms. I utilize my staff to decide what I need to bring in. I've never even thought of bringing someone else in to evaluate my classrooms or what's going on, so... But if it brings value, see, I'm caught, you know, if it brings value, and they think it brings value.
Do you just want to respond?
Do I understand?
And I understand your point.
Because I never brought anybody in.
Is there, is there any desire among the board to table it, to get more information?
Yes. Yes. Oh, can we have more information, right? I mean, it's...
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to table it. Mrs. Chu, if you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, you guys are the professionals who are talking to the professionals who are saying that this is something you like, and I think there were some very good questions raised here and points raised here. You know, you brought it here for a reason, and, you know, perhaps it makes sense to go back and discuss it further with staff, and if this is something that the administration and staff feel would bring value, bring it back with some additional information. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm not an educator, you know, you guys are. You know, the outside perspective does help. Someone who's just not living there might see something that we might not see, so I see the benefit of that, just kind of a neutral outside observer. But really would like to hear more, you know, I would encourage you, if this is something that, that we want to do. I mean, I wouldn't hold back on, you know, three thousand bucks. We just talked about test scores and improvements and all the things we need to do to improve. You know, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish if you guys feel strongly about it.
So does someone want to make a motion to table it? So your, so that's, okay, so Suzanne is making the motion. Mrs. Reese is going to be seconded. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, just when we're getting this information, again, one of my biggest points was the people that are auditing us are the people that are going to sell us something. I would be much more comfortable if an outside auditor came in that has no professional development to sell. And then in their professional opinion, they said, you need this, this, and this. A separate company provides it. There's, there's firewalls between things like that because, and maybe I'm not as trusting a person, but it's just, you know, Mr. Winston's example, you get free estimates from companies. They come in, they assess your roof. You get a free estimate, and they put it on a piece of paper and say, this is what you need. They don't charge you thirty-five-hundred dollars to come in and tell you what you need that they have to sell you. So I...
So maybe Dr. Bowley can check and find if there's any others out there.
Yes, I will. I'd be happy to do that.
My question to the board about if you're willing to table, if there was a willingness to table it, our charge to bring back to you, what I heard tonight, was what's the value added? And so that's not, not aligned with, as Mr. Sizmar said, not aligned with a product, not, you know, opening a door for somebody to provide a service or anything like that. What's the value added? That's what we need to bring back to you if you table this, and then you can take action on that. If we, we can't prove that to you, then rightfully you should not approve it.
Understood.
Past value, meaning quantify how they helped us in the past.
They haven't, they haven't worked with us.
How this company, but not this one.
They haven't, they haven't worked. So we...
We haven't done this.
Never done before.
We haven't done this particular thing.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Mrs. Reese has another question.
Yeah, just one, one statement.
Or statement.
I just hope, you know, we talk about outsiders. I don't want it to be a chilling effect on staff development. I don't want, because then people may not be willing to come to the board with suggestions for staff development if this is this level. And again, we have every right to ask questions. That's our oversee, you know, that's part of our mandate, but I want to reiterate that, you know, we have, keep in mind that staff development is a healthy thing, and we can't always have staff development from within. We send our teachers to conferences so that they can hear from experts in their fields, just like any other professionals like to hear from other professionals, so experts in their areas. So yes, of course, I always advocate for using our own teachers after school, for other activities, for, for, you know, for them sharing their information that they come from a conference, but I don't, please, I, you know, I don't want us to get the impression that we're having, you know, some kind of chilling effect on staff training and letting the staff get the proper training they need.
Thank you. Okay, great. We have the mo, and all in favor?
For table?
I'm sorry. We have the motion in the second to table this to get some more information and bring it back later date. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will look forward to hearing more information on the value added for this. Okay, we're getting there, folks. Look at these diehards till the end. Sorry. It's like the old days, these long meetings. Okay, but we're getting there. The committee reports information items and the good or the cause for the board. I just wanted to start by saying, there's been a lot of talk about the calendar. We did convene the calendar committee. We don't have anything to report as of yet in terms of holidays, but wanted to assure everyone that this is something that's being discussed, and we will look forward to having a report in the calendar committee when the date presents itself to have that information. So... Everyone wants to go home? Oh, Mr. Hong.
So last Friday, I went to the Board of Directors meeting for the New Jersey School Board Association. So we talked a lot about the student learning ability laws. We talked about, about, a lot about the inflation impact to school budgeting. So we, so we're going to lobby very hard with Governor Murphy for more fund from state and ask him for help to address the teaching, teachers and supporting staff shortage. And there are, there's many things we talked, and we formed few committees to lobby with Governor Murphy for support. So primarily it's about the budget and the policy, so, because certain things, for example, addressing this teaching staff shortage is not a local issue. We have to have legislature and governor involved. So that's the things we talked, but it's very good meeting, which it was in twenty. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Mr. Sizmar?
Just good to the cause, real quick. I'd like to, I would have liked to seen some response to the envisioned stuff that was brought up tonight, but I'm hoping, I don't expect anything handed right now, maybe in the future if we could have a presentation. Some of the things that came up that stuck out real quick were, I don't remember a pilot program getting shot down because of budget reasons. I could be wrong with my memory of that, but I know the pilot program came up. Maybe we could, we could get some more information why we didn't have a pilot program. And I was concerned with the one comment, and I've heard this before, and it seems to be true. Did we take test scores off of assessments that are being given in vision math? And the reason why? I've never in my entire career heard of giving assessments and then partial way through the year removing the scores that were achieved on the test or assessment. So if that is happening, I would love to know the reason why we are not giving feedback on test scores when children are taking assessments.
Dr. Bowley, is that linked to Envision, or is that something that the department did? Because I remember hearing about this as well, but I didn't know if it was something that was directly...
The K to four report card has no grades. It's standards-based.
Yes.
So the cover sheet that's going home on top of the assessments now aligns the test question with the standard that it was testing for, so the parent can get that feedback on which standards their child is strong with and which standards they may need a little more support with.
So it's, this is strictly for the K to four?
So instead of putting an arbitrary letter grade, since it doesn't correlate to the grading, there are no grades in K to four.
So it's only the K through four, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So then my question would be, did we start out by giving grades in September and at some point?
Yes.
Changed that?
It wasn't grades.
What was it?
The numerical value, like seventeen out of twenty.
Okay, that's, well, that's a percentage grade in the fraction form, so I think people can figure that out.
So it was taken away?
Why was it done in September, and then why was it removed?
We moved to a new cover sheet that was more standards-aligned. The teachers did the work of aligning which test question aligns to which standard, so thinking that would give parents more information on what's, what specific skills their children need support with, instead of just an arbitrary number at the top, seventeen out of twenty, which didn't give them much information on which pieces they were strong with and which pieces they needed help with.
And now his parental response?
I don't...
Because we're hearing it here tonight, but is, is overall, has the parents found that helpful, or is it something that's frustrating?
When the survey closes and we analyze all the results, I'll be looking for that piece.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, I just got to, I just got to finish. I still haven't got the answer to...
He's on a roll.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gotten the answer to my question.
Second wind. Third wind.
If there's ten questions and you got two wrong, it's not an arbitrary number to have eight out of ten on the top of the paper. So is there no markings whatsoever on the test?